Good evening, Holliston, and welcome to the June 14, 2021 Select Board Meeting. We will get started with our agenda tonight with a update, a project update on the solar project for Marshall Street. I believe tonight we're joined by Beth Greenblatt and Rennie Friedman. Hi, both of you. How are you? Nice to see you.
Hi, folks.
We will.
Beth, good, thank you. Beth, you're going to kick it off with a presentation?
I am, but I wanted, if I may, if it's okay with you folks, I'd like to give Rennie an opportunity to report to the board on the selection and the scholarship awards that Soul Systems has done. I'm very proud of the progress that they made, and I know Rennie is as well, so I thought this was a great opportunity for him to share with you guys.
Please, Rennie, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thanks. Excellent. Thank you, and thanks, Beth, for the intro. Yeah, but before we get into some of the details of the project, just wanted to provide the board with an update on the scholarship program. So very pleased to announce that we recently awarded the first two scholarships in the program. We worked very closely with the high school. They were really very helpful. We received a tremendous amount of very talented applicants. It was not an easy process by any means. We spent quite a bit of time going through the applications. We had an internal group where we talked about and compared notes. But at the end of the day, I'm very pleased to report that we awarded two $2,500 scholarships, one to Akshara Shankar and one to Emily Rivera. They were awarded as part of the awards ceremony that the high school had a couple of weeks ago. And we're now just in the final stages of collecting the information so we can, you know, send the scholarships to the right place. So very happy to report that. The town should be very, very proud of all the students there. Again, we received a tremendous number of applicants. It was a little overwhelming. Quite honestly, it was the caliber and the number of that caliber was extremely high. It was not an easy choice, but we're very happy to report that we have awarded two $2,500 awards.
Thank you very much for the generosity of Soul Systems to fund two scholarships. I think we were under the expectation that there would be one. So two is a big surprise and a great benefit to the two young women who were awarded. So thank you again, Soul Systems.
Our pleasure.
Thanks, Rennie. So I think I can screen share, so I'm going to pull up this presentation. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Excellent, excellent. There's been an enormous amount of progress to date. We're going to share with you a variety of different pieces of the puzzle, where things are and where they're going, and what our conservative expectation is for the schedule going forward and some of the key milestones that are impacting the schedule. But I'm very pleased to report, and I'm sure Rennie would agree, that we've touched a number of departments within the town of Holliston in working through this project from where we started and where we are to date. And COVID notwithstanding, everyone in the town of Holliston jumped in with respect to their specific role in this process and kept this project moving forward despite some of the challenges that we saw due to COVID. So again, my many thanks. Travis's leadership made it happen, and the team that he continuously brought to the table to ensure that we dealt appropriately with pilot issues and siting issues and access to the site and butter concerns and all of those kinds of things, planning, all of the groups have been great to work with to date. So, you know, I'm very pleased with that. So I thought I would just, as a reminder, this slide has not changed. The economics right now have not changed, although there are some metrics that may shift them a little bit. But, you know, the project is still about 3,200 kW DC capacity. In AC is about 2,500 kW. The battery storage is about 50% of the AC capacity, or 1250. We're expecting a little, give or take, around 4.2 million kilowatt hours per year. As you know, that declines at a very low rate as the modules degrade annually at a very low 0.5%. But for the most part, we're in that 4.2 million kilowatt hour range annually for the next 25 years. Just as a point of reference, the town's total annual consumption is about 4.65 million kilowatt hours. So we're producing almost the same amount as what the town consumes, just a little under, which is really great. From a financial perspective, as you know, there are three different revenue streams. The lease revenue is about $373,500 per year, which, you know, morphs into about $9.34 million over the 25-year term. The tax revenue, we work with the assessors and with Travis and the team and with town council. The tax revenue is about $57,000, almost $58,000 a year, which grows to 1.44 million over the 25-year term. Energy benefits from net metering credits is estimated at about $79,000 per year or about $1.98 million over 25 years. Boy, there's little dollar signs missing, but they're there in my mind. And so the total estimated benefits are about $510,000 per year, growing to about 12 overall over the 25-year term, about $12.76 million. So it's a very, very successful project. It's expected to be. There's still a few outstanding items that could shift these economics a little bit, and some of them we will speak to tonight. So just to give you a couple of, and please feel free to interrupt if you have a question that you'd like me to address on the spot. We thought we'd give you a little update towards some of the key milestones, commercial contracting in particular. We are in near final form. Actually, Soul Systems has just recently sent over to us the three agreements that they have done, what I'm hoping is the last set of round of changes. Most of the outstanding changes are more form and substance than they are commercially related. There aren't any major legal issues. I think we've been through pretty much every one of these agreements, and we're tweaking around the edges with some of the comments. As you can, you'll see in this presentation, the negotiation of the lease and the net metering power purchase agreement and the pilot agreement has not stopped Soul Systems from proceeding forward in entitling this project and getting it ready for construction. But I would say we're pretty close to final form, and in that final form, that will then come to the board for its review. Obviously, you will have an opinion of council, of town council, as to, you know, as to form and the appropriateness and any of the key legal provisions that you feel is appropriate to. But I think we're pretty close. There are a few things that are shifting it around a little bit. We had to, which we'll talk a little bit about, we had to make some changes to the parcel in terms of the boundary lines in order to properly and beneficially position the project for net metering. So there's going to be some tweaking around the edges of the description of the parcel. But for all intent and purposes, it's in final form. We're close to final form. From a utility perspective, this is probably one of the biggest challenges of this whole project, which is not atypical of these types of large-scale, ground-mounted, front-of-the-meter solar projects. The EverSource Distribution System Impact Study, and there were two of them that they required we do. One was a steady-state study, and the other was dynamic under varying conditions. They were completed, and the report was issued at the end of March of 2021. The good news is Soul Systems' estimate of what they thought the cost, the utility upgrade costs to basically plug the solar ray into the grid were appropriate and conservative, and the cost came in about $55,000 lower than anticipated. I want to note that the costs that EverSource projects is plus or minus 25%. So they're usually in the range, but, and I've had some projects where the costs actually, once constructed, came in a little lower, and they reimbursed money. But for now, to the extent that piece of the process is complete, we're in a better position than we otherwise thought we'd be. And we'll talk about the implication of that. The next study, which is probably one, certainly one, that I, and I believe Rennie, did not anticipate initially. No one could have anticipated it, is a study that's being required of the independent system operator of New England who operates the regional transmission grid, is requiring a study, which is called the Affected System Operator Study. And that's expected to begin, we haven't heard yet when ours is starting, so we're going to assume in the July 2021 timeframe. There's two different types of study. There's study light, if you will, or study very detailed. Sadly, we are in the study very detailed phase, which is called a Level 3 ASO study. And that takes anywhere, and I'll let Rennie correct me if I'm wrong, nine months to 12 months for them to do complete and report out. We don't know what the result of that's going to be. There's been other studies like this. Some have reported out with astronomical upgrade costs. Some have reported out with insignificant upgrade costs. Whatever the result of this Level 3 ASO study is, it is not only going to impact the Holliston project. It's going to impact about 20, I believe, 20 megawatts of projects, a little north of 20 megawatts of projects. So whatever costs are generated as a result of that study will be proportionally shared by those projects, unless the Department of Public Utilities rules, which I don't expect will happen, but rules in favor of a different treatment of how those costs get, how those costs get paid for in terms of cost allocation and cost causality and all of those types of things. Either rate payers in general across EverSource's service territory pays for it or the individual projects pay for it. It's those two options. Shareholders never pay for it. So as you can see here, there's two things. One is this risk of cost that unfortunately is there. We don't know what it is until it's done. And the other is it will absolutely delay the start of the project, of the construction. Because until Soul Systems and the town of Holliston are advised as to what it's going to take to interconnect this asset, it would not be prudent to move forward with construction without knowing what those costs are going to look like. So as you can see here, we're expecting the results first quarter of 2022, probably at the earliest. So we'll talk a little bit about the implication that has on schedule, but I wanted to certainly put that out. And let me talk about some of the other key milestones that we, my little thingies in the way, key milestones that we have been working on. So in terms of local permitting, Soul Systems has very actively worked with the Conservation Commission. They submitted their original NOI in late March. They had an initial public hearing in mid-April. There was a stormwater review with follow-up information requested and provided in mid-May. And there's a second public hearing scheduled for July 13. The public hearings for the Conservation Commission trigger sort of the next date for the planning board to allow for that proper due diligence to happen in the various areas and allow for the, sort of, that common knowledge to be shared. So Soul Systems had made application for site plan review and stormwater and land disturbance. They filed that also at the end of March. There was a public hearing in April. The site plan review public hearing is scheduled for a couple of days after the CONCOM hearing on July 15. So we're making very, very good progress there and expect that, you know, certainly in the near, that these two activities should be completed in the near term. With respect to land use, as I believe you're all aware, there are two legal parcels that the landfill sits on, the actual cap landfill sits on. And while from a development and a construction perspective, there's no concern about that, the net metering rules, which is the state, which is the program, the utility tariff program that compensates for exported solar generation, has a restriction on the number of parcels per interconnection. So it's basically called the single parcel rule, so we can only have one parcel per interconnection. And we only have one interconnection. So the result was, I worked with Travis and Karen from the planning board and your assessor to look at ways to combine this parcel into one legal parcel. And ultimately, the simplest and most direct way was to basically take out the dividing line between the two parcels and A and R it together. And so that process is underway, and, you know, the town planner is working directly with Soul Systems and their environmental or their geotechnical engineer who's provided support at Soul Systems' costs. So we appreciate that for this process to merge these two parcels together. With respect to state permitting, Soul Systems first made, completed the application for permitting with the Mass DEP for post-closure use permit, which is required. Actually, you have a post-closure use permit on the part of the parcel that has the soccer field. And so we are required to do the same for use as a solar field. And Soul Systems put together the application. It was shared with the town. It was also shared with the town's LSP, who does monitoring and reporting on the town's landfill. And Kleinfelder and Kleinfelder did their third-party field review, came back with some recommendations for some changes, raised some issues. Again, they have so much intimate knowledge of your landfill. And there was a significant amount of collaboration that went on between the town and Kleinfelder and Soul Systems. That review process culminated, and Soul Systems and the town collectively filed the application with Mass DEP for their review. The review is expected to take the allowed 96 days. And so we're hoping that and expecting that there'll be an order sometime by the end of July, unless there's further information that Mass DEP is going to require. It was a very comprehensive filing, very standard process. Once that happens, what will happen is an order will be issued. The town's obligation under their original closure permit will not change. Any additional conditions that DEP will require because of the solar ray would be articulated in that order. Otherwise, it'll be a straightforward, here's what you do. Part of that is they will require Soul Systems to have an independent third-party engineer oversee the construction who has authority to stop activities if there's a concern or a threat of any kind of damaging the integrity of the cap. So the town's interest is highly protected through this permitting process. Did somebody have a question?
No, please continue. You'll get them at the end, I think.
Okay. So I'm calling this an illustrative project schedule only because there is several dates that could potentially be moving targets, which we don't know. Most of them are tied to things that are completely outside of our control. But, you know, the assumptions are all state and local permitting will be completed by the end of July, that the landfill parcels will be merged and recorded at the registry by the end of August, and that the ISO New England study, that ASO study we talked about, will be completed by March of 2022. Of course, the timeline is completely, even though it's an ISO New England study, it's conducted by consultants to EverSource because it's on their system, with then review by ISO New England and conclusions by ISO New England. But EverSource really determines this timeline. It's not really tariff-based. The construction schedule, as we anticipate, is that there'll be an interconnection agreement between Soul Systems and EverSource sometime in the April 2022 timeline. The town would issue a notice to proceed to Soul Systems at that point, that same timeframe, April 2022. At that point, Soul Systems has agreed contractually that they would pay the town 25% of the first-year lease payment. That we would file to secure a net metering cap allocation at the same time. There are specific requirements to be completed prior to that application being made. We will have completed them by that time. Soul Systems will then ramp up all of the activities they need to do to get the project constructed, which is they close on their financing, they'll order equipment, and they'll engage their EPC, their construction contractor. And Rennie projects it somewhere in the April to May timeframe. They're going to try to move things along as rapidly as possible, but they want to take advantage as much as they can of good weather and get activities moving forward as quickly as they can. They're expecting to mobilize in the June 2022 timeframe. And construction, they're, all things going as planned, is in the June through September 2022 timeframe. They certainly will coordinate with the Holliston youth soccer folks to make sure that there is, that, you know, minimize any impact or conflict with respect to activities on the soccer field. Again, they're not using that space, but there's activity that will be going on in both spaces. But we don't anticipate there's going to be any significant impact. In addition to that, as part of the construction and at the mobilization stage, when there's a kickoff meeting, there'll be a series of discussions about trucks coming down Marshall Street and staging and where, how they're going to mobilize and where stuff is going, and just ensuring that the impact on the community is limited. And I know Rennie will be working directly with Travis and Scott to make sure that, again, the impact on the community is minimal. You know, there's going to be a bunch of equipment. I think folks have heard this before, and certainly Rennie can answer the questions about it, but there'll be a bunch of equipment that is brought in on trailers. And once that equipment is there, the activity is generally going to be pickup trucks, those kinds of things, of people working on site to construct. So the big equipment comes in, could take a couple of days, but that will all be well-coordinated with the community, with police, with Travis and his team and others. Rennie is expecting that we should be substantially complete in the October 2022 timeframe. And we're hoping by the end of the calendar year of 2022, EverSource will have given us permission to flip the switch on. That's the goal. Again, that timeline is also determined by EverSource, not scheduled or not required under a tariff. But, you know, they'll work to move that forward. I would expect with the governor's emergency order lifted today, EverSource's force majeure will also be lifted. They too have been, most of them, working from home, but trying to do the work that they're doing. It has been a challenge. It's been a challenge for EverSource and the rest of us, but it's been a particular challenge just moving this process forward with EverSource on the interconnection process. So with that, I am happy to take questions, and I'm sure Rennie would be happy to take questions as well.
Okay, thank you for that. It certainly sounds like good progress has been made in the permitting area of things. I think the delays are probably going to trigger some questions from my board members. So I'm going to turn first to John and then to Ben, and then if I have any outstanding questions, I'll finish up. Does that sound okay to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, Beth. Hi, Rennie. How are you?
Doing well, thanks.
Great. Beth, we've been on this project now for a little more than two years. Is that about right?
Yes.
We awarded the contract to Soul Systems in November of 19. Is that about right?
Sounds right, yes. That sounds right.
November 1, right? And then over the last couple of years, as you know, I've been a very big proponent of the project. I've been somewhat concerned about the timeframe, given the multiple moving parts, the oversight issues associated with the SMART program as well as EverSource. And I think you've given us some heads up on some of those projected delays. As I look back at some of the presentations you've made to this board over the last couple of years, I've seen some of those yellow flags that you put in your PowerPoint presentations. Can you tell me why the ASO program, in my estimation, has suddenly come out of nowhere to cause a substantial delay in a project that, by my estimation, is going to cost my community a half a million dollars?
So let me take a stab at that. So these ASO studies are being done because of the congestion of distributed generation on the circuits. And circuits first, so the wires going from the local area back to the substation, and then the substation through to the transmission system. As the Commonwealth has increased the capacity or proposing to increase the capacity in the SMART program, and as you know, had several rounds of capacity under the former SREC program, in my personal and professional opinion, the utility infrastructure has never been properly evaluated to determine whether or not it could handle all this capacity. Utilities are historically conservative because their mission is to provide you safe and reliable and quality power. And so dealing with all this distributed generation coming at them is not something that I believe they prioritize from an infrastructure standpoint. So that's what we're dealing with now, an infrastructure that is having a more difficult time dealing with all of the distributed generation that's being fed into it. And again, because that process is not, it's becoming a little bit more transparent in terms of how much capacity in the different areas on the different circuits. And EverSource has made some information available publicly through online portals, I'm sure at the direction of the Public Utilities Commission. There was really no way to know how much congestion there was on the system. Holliston is a part of the greater Boston grid, if you will. And so EverSource looks at that overall grid as a big system, even though what happens in Boston really has a limited impact on what happens in Holliston. You're still part of that network, if you will, to some extent. So did we know? No, but about a year ago, this became an enormous issue, maybe a little more than a year ago, Rennie, right? In central Mass, this became an enormous issue behind National Grid in central Mass because there was so much generation and the system, and there were some tariff requirements with ISO New England that was not really followed by National Grid. So it became a much, much bigger issue. So, you know, long and short of it, it didn't surprise me that a study needed to be done. It surprised me that this mega-study needed to be done.
Can I interrupt you for a minute, then? If it didn't surprise you, why wasn't the potential, the ASO study revealed to the town back in April of 2020 when you gave us a presentation of the status of the project?
Oh, I had no idea it was going to be required then. Absolutely no idea. In fact, Rennie, I don't think we learned of this but for the last, maybe, two months?
Well, I guess just to clarify a couple of things really quickly, and I think it's important, it helps add some context here. So we did know that we were going to need an ASO study. What was not known until the very end of May was that it was going to be a Level 3. We had received previous guidance from EverSource. They identified that we were tracking towards a Level 01, which is, Beth noted in her presentation, it's kind of ASO white. That only takes a couple of months. It's done first. So we knew we were going to need an ASO. The surprise is that we were kicked into a Level 3. And that has less to do with our particular project and more just the number of projects in the area as a whole. So the change from a, we were tracking the Level 01, because we had been given that guidance, the change of that to a Level 3, which is a much longer process. That's what the unknown was. That's what the surprise was at the.
Why didn't the customer know that, Rennie?
Well, Rennie, when did you find out that you were going to need to be, that there was going to be an ASO study? Because it was not known. I didn't know it last April.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the exact date, but. Yeah, I'm not sure of of the exact date, but we and apologies if that wasn't communicated clearly, but the fact that we were going to need an ASO was no. Again, I don't know the exact date off the top of my head. But the 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 surprise that we got, the unfortunate surprise at the end of May is that it's not going to be a level zero one, is that it's going to be a level three.
And I, no, I hear the, I hear you. That's that's, I get that. I I see how it moved from a one to a three and that's bad for everybody. My problem, as I represent Holliston, is the customer was not informed of this potential problem. What we were tracking for problems, Beth, if you may recall, were Eversource, Eversource and Eversource. The interconnection agreement, getting their attention. You're going to do a lot of the background work with local authorities, with the CONCOM and other entities to kind of accelerate things. But this has turned into a nine-month-plus delay on a project that's going to be at least, at least a year behind. That's lost revenue to our town. That hurts a lot. And go ahead, please, Beth, go ahead.
Yeah, so I guess two things. One of the reasons why, to be honest with you, I was not as aware of this and and again, my apologies, I was not aware of the ASO study until maybe, again, four months ago when Rennie told me he thought it'd be a level zero one. But you know, the other project that's across the street on private land, that first we we needed to wait for the study of that project to be completed before we were able to be studied, but that project actually did not fall into the ASO study. So there was hope early on. With respect to the lost revenues, I would say they're delayed. I I hear you, they're certainly lost in this fiscal year, but they're, you're not losing the revenue, the revenue will, the twenty-five years of revenue will happen. They're just delayed in a year. So I understand the the financial concern and and the desire to have that revenue in this calendar year. And and that was always the the goal. But this is one of the things that was unfortunately out of everyone's control.
I'm glad you brought up that other project across the street because I was going to ask you, Beth, because I know you have other clients, you have other projects in the metro area. And on the Eversource website, they do talk about the ASO program as being needed when the capture or catchment of projects, as you alluded earlier, gets in that twenty megawatt range. Did something happen during this time period that Holliston's putting its ducks in a row that led us to be swept up into other projects that brought us into this ASO that Rennie's talking about? Because it seems to me like there's been some market forces, perhaps other projects, that we got sucked into. And so my question is, is that the case? And second, because you mentioned the one on the other side of Marshall Street, are they ahead of us? Did they squeak by and not become part of whatever wave we caught?
So yes, they're ahead of us, but they were ahead of us from the beginning. And they had put in their application for interconnection before we did, for starters. The second piece is there are projects from Hopkington and other neighboring communities that are in that are grouped under this ASO study. So it's not just activity in in Holliston that's caused it. It's it's activity that's going back to the substation. And and we're actually, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
I apologize.
No, where the the, there is a substation, a Holliston substation. This project is not targeted to go into that substation. And that was Eversource's choice. Eversource directs the best path of interconnection to their in in their distribution system, on their circuits, back to their system.
When Travis gave us the information that the project was entering this ASO phase, my first reaction was, can we make an appeal to Eversource to beg out of this directive to join them in this level three review or study? Is that a possibility? Do we have any control over that decision?
I I would say no. I will tell you, though, that I went through the list of projects that were included in the ASO study and compared it to some other data that Eversource had provided to the PUC. And I raised some questions as to the appropriateness, in particular, that Hopkington project, whether it really belonged in the bucket of projects that we're being studied under. And it's about five megawatts. In addition to that, that project is super, super old. Why it's still active, it's unclear to me. So I've raised some questions. Travis has seen the communication because, of course, I copy him on everything. And I have not yet gotten an answer back from Eversource.
Before, oh, sorry, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I apologize. If that if that project actually comes out, we're under the twenty megawatt cap. And so there's maybe some possibility. But again, all of that is not, unfortunately, under the town's control.
Is there any legislative influence in this process?
I I don't know. I think getting an answer back.
If you want to take it offline, that's fine. I'm asking because I want to do what we can do to get out of this quagmire. I am really unhappy that this is the setup project, which was going along quite well in the middle of a pandemic, and now we're faced with this big delay. And I I just look at, it's disgusting to watch bureaucracy play out like this. And and the the real kick in the pants is the cost. Are you telling me that there's a risk of cost coming our way or your way? And that Eversource is going to make the users pay for this? Did I hear you correctly?
So the way interconnection costs, it's costs are are paid for. It's under the sort of cost causality, cost recovery method of the DPU, which means whatever causes the cost pays for the cost. So if our solar project, so for example, the cost to interconnect your project, literally plug it into the grid right now is what, Rennie, about three hundred grand? A little, it's a little under three hundred thousand dollars, just to basically plug the project into the grid. And and the the Holliston project is paying for that. Now, Soul Systems anticipated that cost in their offer to the town. So that's been, so that's already baked in. And there's some, again, it came in a little under than from what we anticipated. If there are no costs that come out of the ASO study, we're in good shape and and that's done. We we just, we don't know. And and so with respect to the question about any politics, you know, the these ASO studies are designed to protect the distribution and transmission system from situations where distributed generation causes integrity issues, either safety or integrity issues. They are, as I mentioned, ultimately very, very conservative to make sure that you turn on your TV and it will always go on. So I I don't know if there's any political play. What I can say is, you know, I think we we want an answer to the questions that I raised. The questions I raised may be absolutely have no no impact.
I I have to weigh in for a minute. I I am a huge Beth Greenblatt fan. I think you've done a phenomenal job. And I'm not, I'm not saying this because you're smiling at me. I have to say, the way you've handled this project has been masterful, you were in a league by yourself. But you have to agree, from a project planning perspective, when a utility company can drop into a a project planning cycle, like the one you and Soul Systems have been working on, and cause this kind of disruption at this point in the process without the customer having his eyes wide open on what is about to happen, that's not right. It should be part of something else where the customer sees, you know what, guys, we're putting our application and we can take a left-hand turn and go to level one and everybody be happy. Or it could be level three if a surrounding community drops a project on us. That's, I mean, if if you're surprised by this, Beth, then something's broken in the way that the utility companies are working with, in our case, nonprofit communities, to create alternative energy resources. And I have to go back to the to the to the cause here is, and I'm sorry to the chair, I feel like I'm monopolizing time, but I'm really disgusted by the lack of revenue. Yeah, I'll get it in year twenty-six, but, you know, I'll be in a dirt nap by then. I'm I'm more worried about what I can get now. And we've been talking about this timeline now for two-plus years. And I thought we were managing it pretty well, but I want to say it again. If Beth Greenblatt, if Beth Greenblatt gets hoodwinked, something's wrong. Something's wrong. And that's what's got me really fired up about this.
Yeah, and I and I hear you and I I appreciate your kind words. And nobody was as frustrated as I was. And and I I'm being kind on this, on this, in this presentation. I I mean, as I mentioned, the utilities, in my opinion, watched, stood back and said, this is going, they knew this was all going to happen, I believe. And they waited till it literally hit the fan. And now they're saying, well, we got to do these studies because it's our, it's our, this is what we have to do. And it's really up to the Department of Public Utilities, who I believe at this point has started to jump in, that the Department of Energy Resources has modified the SMART program to provide all kinds of extensions due to these ASO studies. So they're reacting, everyone is literally reacting to this complete meltdown, if you will, of projects on, you know, on a reasonable path of success that get stopped or slowed down for significant periods of time. So as much as I I feel your pain and my frustration level was was at a pretty heightened level with with directly with Eversource. I mean, it's frustrating. Go ahead.
Without going into details, Beth and Rennie, is this project wrecking ball affecting other Soul System projects or Beth Greenblatt projects? Did you get hit on other jobs?
You have, yes.
Rennie, so as as the town's aware, I I am working on a project in central Mass that Soul Systems was actually selected as the as the vendor. And because of this, their projects collapsed. Now, National Grid is in a very different position than Eversource is, particularly in your area. You are on the Cape, there are some other issues with the Cape because there's such high saturation. But your your area is not overly saturated. So I'm hoping this is not as big a deal, it's just we're lumped in with the rest of Eastern Mass. That's my hope, that we're not going to see anything major. And and we're hoping that this ASO study can move along in a in a reasonable timeframe. But again, it's taken about nine months. So I would say, yes, mostly behind National Grid. But I have a couple of projects on the Cape that I fully expect are going to be in the same boat soon.
Dan, Tina, I'm so sorry for taking the table, but I would like to make a recommendation, if I could, before I move on. I would like to have direct the town administrator working with Beth to draft a memo to our state senator and our state representative explaining the condition that the utility company has placed this project in as a result of their management and their decisions and the impact economically it's having on our planning and our project. I don't think the utility company cares about the impact that we're spending now forty-five minutes talking about. I think they landed into some decision that has taken experts like the ones on our call completely by surprise. I think that's wrong. And I think the only remedy we have right now is write a letter, let our elected officials know what's going on and ask them to follow up with the Department of Public Utilities to try and get an answer as to why this happened and what we can do to get out of it. Thanks for your time, sorry, guys.
No, I think those are really good comments. And I think you just, an important point there in turning to our legislators to at least at the minimum express the concern and at maximum.
And one more thing, with respect, Rennie and and Beth, I I hope my poor tone didn't go to you personally. I have immense respect for both of you, thank you for your work. I'm just pissed, so there you go. Sorry about that.
As are we.
As are we.
Beth and Rennie obviously put this on our radar as early as they knew, right? So I just want, I want to make sure people are aware of that, right? When we had them with us in January, it was a, you know, this may be coming, we don't, you know, we don't think so. But the the level three ASO, I'm reading actually the Holliston reporter, from January said a a level three ASO would be nine more months. So as soon as they knew, obviously, we knew, but again, obviously frustrating. Sorry, go ahead.
Dan, did you have questions or comments?
Well, not really. All I would just say is, you know, it is frustrating, but I also, I my my main comment is just to say, you know, I I do appreciate your, Beth and Rennie, I appreciate your candor and your, the 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 detail, level of detail of the presentation. There wasn't a lot that I had questions about because you gave us a lot of information and it was very detailed information and I appreciate that. And I have, since I've gotten involved in the project a little later, I don't quite have the the same level of 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 care, not not because I don't care, but simply because it's just, it hasn't, it hasn't been on my radar as long as the as the people sitting to my left. So I just want to say thank you for the work you're doing. It is frustrating with the circumstances and I will cheerfully support a memo to our legislators to try to see if they can see what they can do or see if they can find out a little bit more information about what's happening in the state. That's the Department of Public Utilities.
I want to circle back around to that comment in a minute, but I have a couple of real specific questions. In terms of revenue then, so the notice to proceed is is on target for April twenty-second. That's what triggers the twenty-five percent payment of the lease agreement to the Town Hall. And that will impact our FY twenty-two revenue. Okay.
So twenty-five percent of that first year lease is leaving ninety-three thousand, three seventy-five?
Is that at risk in any way?
You know, I would say the only thing that that could now cause, because we've worked through the pilot, the only thing that could now cause concern would be the results of this ASO study and to the extent it creates any significant cost implications to the project.
Okay.
We've got a little room in the connection agreement, a little room to move around.
Okay. And then the five hundred, seven hundred and ten, five hundred and ten thousand dollars a year that's anticipated flows most more than likely midway through twenty-three, FY twenty-three for the Town Hall. But all of that also is still in question. Okay. And then you made a comment, well, actually, let me back up. The combining of the parcels that you're working with your assessor on, does that impact any of our reporting and compliance with DEP? I know that our Health Director does regular compliance reports, I believe, with DEP. Does this combining of the parcels change any of that in any meaningful way? Moving forward, is there something that we need to be aware of with the parcels now being combined and how we report on the cap and the landfill?
I would say, once the parcels are officially merged and appropriately documented with the registry as as part of the next filing with DEP that Scott normally does, Kleinfeld or supports them, they would just notate it to DEP. As far as DEP is concerned, both parcels are considered landfill since there's municipal solid waste on both and subject to their jurisdiction. So just merging them together is is just is is more, from their perspective, I would expect form over substance, but we should certainly notify them once it's done.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned the construction period at this point in time, and I I understand it can fluctuate, being June to September of twenty twenty-two. And you're not saying, I just want to be clear, that there are heavy commercial vehicles, the heavy vehicles coming to the site, the earth moving, is not for the full June to September timeframe? That's a much smaller timeframe within that window?
Yeah, Rennie, you want to give some color to the schedule?
Correct, yep, yeah, absolutely, happy to. Yeah, so and 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 I don't want to take up too much time, but in in general, most of the heavy equipment, large tractor-trailers, earth-moving activities will happen at the very beginning of the project, in the first four to six or so weeks of the project. To, you know, there there is a little bit of fill that we need to bring in to kind of smooth out some areas of the cap, just to make sure that the water doesn't pond. There there is some gravel we need to bring in to build some access roads. And then, of course, there's the, there's the solar, the PV system itself that we need to 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 bring in. So it's a ballasted system, meaning we don't drive piles in the ground because that will kind of take the cap, so we're bringing in concrete blocks. There's the racking that goes on top of those blocks, there's the solar panels themselves, there's the battery storage. So what what typically happens and what the plan is here is that you do, you you, we're going to need to to bring in that additional earth right up front, that gravel right up front, get the site prepped and then bring all the equipment in and get it on site. That actually happens relatively quickly in the grand scheme of things. Again, the the heavy traffic will be for the first four to six weeks or so. And then there is. And then there is a lot of, uh, setting of equipment and wiring and a lot of electrical work that happens after that. So, um, the first four to six weeks is when there's a lot more, most of the heavy vehicles, um, and, and larger vehicles traveling to and from the site.
Thank you, okay. And then last thing I wanted to circle back around to, um, you mentioned that saturation of the market. What does that mean for future additional solar projects in Hollison, if anything? It sounds meaningful and impactful and I, if, if there is no concern there, we can move on and, and thank you for your presentation. Um, but is, is there something more to that that the Town Hallison ought to be thinking about and being aware of for future additional solar projects in town?
So there's, there's two interesting things, not to get global on us, but, so we have, on a national level, the desire to have an infrastructure program. And on a local level, we have a governor who just, you know, March twenty-sixth signed into law a really aggressive climate bill that's gonna get us to be carbon neutral by twenty-fifty. In order for that to happen, we need some significant investment in electrical infrastructure. And so if the Town of Hollison wanted to do a small project, um, small, in comparison to your current project, right? Um, a carport, a rooftop or something. Um, I, I would expect, again, it's, it's this balance of, of, of capacity on their system and what their system can handle. It depends on the circuit. But as we see more solar development, local solar development in Massachusetts, it is, it is raising the obvious challenges on the utility infrastructure that needs to be modernized. So the utilities have, um, grid modernization plans and they're working toward modernizing the grid. But in order to meet the Commonwealth's goals, this, this plan that the legislature and the governor just put into, to effect, that they're gonna need to accelerate some of that. So I would expect over time, um, the challenges may be less, but in the interim period, you know, the costs are gonna be the cost. I can tell you that, um, the Department of Public Utilities opened its own investigation as to how to deal with all these costs associated with upgrading infrastructure and the benefits that that upgrade generates for ratepayers in general. And so they're looking at, you know, major costs being borne by all ratepayers and very specific project-related costs being borne by the entity. So they're looking at all of these different things. Um, but, you know, this, with all due respect, but this speed of government doesn't always move at the pace that we'd like them to. And I think it's gonna, because of the involvement of the community stakeholders, everyone involved, it's, that piece is gonna take some time, but I expect that the Town of Hollison will be able to have, um, other solar projects. And particularly if you're looking at projects that are going behind your meter as opposed to plugging into the grid, I would expect that the impact that has on the system, while they have to study it the same way, the impact it will have on the system will be lessened.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Um, I don't think we have any other board member questions, uh, so I'm gonna turn to the audience, those who are on the Zoom call. If anyone has a question for Rennie or Beth or the board about the solar project, please raise your hand, I'd be happy to hear from you. So seeing none, um, Beth and Rennie, I'm gonna thank you for what was otherwise a great job delivering some not creating the CNN there. Um, but the presentation was very helpful, it's always good to have a review of such a complicated project as this, so, um, we always appreciate that. And thanks for taking our questions.
All set, thanks, Chris. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Good night. All right, so we're gonna move on, on the advent of the coronavirus community update and Beth and Kathy come up to the table? Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, thank you for having me. Hopefully will be another historic time at the table. Uh, in terms of the update, I am very pleased to report that for the first time since late July, we only have one active case. We have not received any new cases since I saw you last. Um, and we have, uh, we did dip down to zero cases in late August, but since then it's climbed. So we're down to one active case, which is at a single-family home. We've got eight hundred and two recoveries and we still are only, uh, aware of eight COVID-related fatalities during the last year-plus. So really, we, we like to see this, uh, graph plateauing off. And when you look at our percent positivity and compare that to number of cases taken, again, it's great that we, for the fourth week in a row, are in the gray. Uh, I actually had to adjust the bottom number for our scale here of tests administered because previously, uh, we've been using seven fifty as the bottom number. And because last, uh, data set for the two weeks showed less than seven hundred and fifty, we had to adjust that down slightly to five hundred, but doesn't, uh, change the overall impression of the, the graph, of the graph. Uh, looking at the map of the state, we're very pleased, uh, once again, for the first time since last summer, there are no communities in either the yellow moderate or red high-risk category. So, uh, it's trending the way we want it to, not only locally, but in the region as well as in the Commonwealth itself. In terms of our vaccination status, uh, we are just shy of eight in ten, uh, in our community being partially vaccinated. Uh, and we are more than two-thirds fully vaccinated. And that includes eighty-three percent of the twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds have received at least one shot. Uh, and more than one hundred percent of the sixteen-to-nineteen-year-olds have received at least one shot as of the report last Thursday, which was for vaccines in arms as of June eighth. And I do wanna once again reiterate how it is that we get percentages that are in excess of one hundred because this continues to capture, uh, a lot of attention, uh, in multiple settings. Um, the percentages are based on the census data that the DPH is using and comparing that to actual shots in arms. So when they think that there are fourteen-hundred-and-eighty-seven individuals between the ages of sixty-five and seventy-four, but fourteen-hundred-and-ninety-nine people get shots, there's a, uh, a gap between what they thought was in that population set and the actual people who got shots. So that's how we get percentages that sometimes exceed one hundred. It's based on the census, uh, band that they were using for their comparison.
But you are saying, you are good with numbers?
I, I do have, uh, a little bit of numerical acumen, yes. Uh, it is, it is not a spreadsheet or a, um, fat finger calculation problem. Uh, and with that, I will pause on my first of three cycles this evening.
Uh, any questions?
Are we in the clear, Chief?
Uh, I do not wanna be in a position where several months from now you come back and say, remember, like, June fourteen?
Cause I don't think we are.
I don't either.
I think, uh, we're in a pause. We're in a very healthy position.
We're great.
I think the plan is working.
Yes.
But, uh, I think people still need to be on guard.
Uh, you know, wholeheartedly.
Um, with respect to, um, the, the statewide apparatus, um, you didn't touch on it, but I think we're reading, the vaccination sites are shutting down, the testing sites are becoming a little bit harder to find.
Yes.
Um, do you have any advice for people if they still want to get vaccines, where to find them, um, and what to do if they wanna get tested?
Sure. So excellent, both excellent questions. Most of the retail pharmacies, uh, are at the point where they are allowing walk-in. It used to be the chance to schedule, uh, days, weeks in advance, but many, uh, retail outlets are to the point where there is more vaccine than there are people, uh, requesting it. So there is a lot of availability. Um, it shouldn't take much effort to be able to find, uh, a shot if you're interested. Uh, and secondarily, if people are interested in being tested, uh, check with their primary care physician. Uh, they can direct them to probably where the closest site is for that.
Thanks, Chief.
Absolutely.
Um, just the only, uh, thing I would just, uh, comment on is it looks like, when we look at the vaccination rates, it looks like no reason we're, I mean, obviously the, um, uh, not everyone's been fully vaccinated, but no reason we're, we're not quite to eighty percent, it looks like, is because of the, uh, population that isn't available to get vaccines?
Zero to eleven represents fourteen-point-one percent of our population. So when we get to eighty-five-point-nine, uh, on paper, uh, we, we would be-
We're pretty close to, pretty close to, so it's, you know, so most people who are, can get vaccines have gotten.
Oh, the supermajority, absolutely, yes. Thank you. Yes.
I have no questions tonight.
Excellent.
On the coronavirus, the update's moving on and the CARE Act, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, under coronavirus, I think it'll probably be the most, um, uh, prevalent for this, uh, for the June fifteenth remote meetings. Um, still waiting.
Sure.
I think that-
I was gonna say that.
That's a, that's a-
I heard that was probably a good first. That, that's a, a, a great question.
Did not better under CAREs?
No, 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 one, one that I had not, uh, had, had not, it did not catch me by surprise. Uh-
Well, we wanna fire you as emergency manager director, yeah, which is cool for a little while. That's harsh. We need you back.
Um-
We wanna bring you back as fire chief.
Great. Uh, so last we knew, uh, the bill had been ordered to a, uh, House Committee on Bills in the third reading. So it is, it has not been, uh, acted upon, uh, yet. It has not been voted on by both houses and therefore has not been sent to the governor for his signature. Uh, the key, uh, paragraphs in the draft bill as it exists right now headed to the third reading, um, would be the provisions relative to, uh, certain measures adopted during a state of emergency would be extended to December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, if it gets voted on. So I know early on there had been some talk, the governor had filed legislation that was looking towards September. Uh, as it's gone through amendments or it's gone through the committee process, both on the Senate side as well as on the House side, the current iteration of the bill, uh, would be replaced with the words, "Or during a period ending on December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one." So, uh, when it finally gets acted upon, we'll get even a little bit more, uh, of a cushion for this current, uh, year, calendar year. But we just need to get through both houses before, and to the, the governor for his signature.
So where does this come up now?
Yeah.
If you travel. Uh, do you guys, do you, Beth and John, do you wanna see some clarity for what this means tomorrow when the orders, the data-
Yeah, no Zoom, yes.
If no action is taken by the legislature and the governor by midnight, then-
Tonight?
Yes, midnight tonight, then the community would not be able to allow remote participation for boards and committees.
Okay.
Which would mean that they would need to meet in person.
Remote participation as designed under the executive.
Uh, under, under, that would mean the, the composition of the board not necessarily public. Uh, both, both. So if there was, there really was no provision for, uh, someone taking advantage of a public meeting through the technology previously.
Questions, comments?
Because again, the, the, the prior sort of COVID paradigm, the remote participation, which would need to be voted, uh, and adopted by, uh, in our case, the select board, uh, that was remote participation designed, uh, when there was a majority of the committee or board present. The chair had to be present. Um, the member who was participating remotely had to explain the reason why they were, uh, participating remotely and all votes that these five votes voted. It was really only to, to facilitate a member of a board or committee that couldn't be there for some extenuating circumstance. It was never, you know, that option for quote-unquote remote participation was never designed for what we've experienced. Has been great in the last year-plus where we have seen more participation of the public at, uh, you know, as the, the town and other communities have been doing the work of governments.
It's an interesting point because as, as Ben brought up, I mean, the mere presence of Zoom gives the viewing audience a different angle to participate. Oh, for years we've been allowing that to happen through HCAP. But I guess the distinction is having individuals participate in our meeting through Zoom would not be permissible. Is that the distinction?
Correct, so, so the difference is-
Wanna participate?
Being a viewer versus being a participant.
Passive versus being active. You have to be here, you are there to ask a question or participate.
Yes, or have sent it in, it's still electronically out of time, you know, sent a, a question or comment to the town that is greater, that could be read into the record.
As we sit here tonight, tomorrow's June fifteenth Board of Health meeting has instructions for both joining by computer and joining by phone.
Correct.
So what are your directions as we sit here tonight to the Chair of the Board of Health?
If nothing happens legislatively and signed by the governor by midnight, uh, then that meeting would need to, to take place physically and they would not be able to, uh, open up that bridge for participation. If they chose to continue to all meet in the same room and wanted for, to the clerk's position, uh, more engagement in terms of viewing, just not participating, because Board of Health usually isn't covered by HCAP, um, then they certainly could allow people to view, but they wouldn't be able to take audience questions. They wouldn't be able to have someone share a, a presentation remotely, they would be none of, of that. Uh, so their instructions would be, you need to authentically be in, in the room at the same time where the meeting can take place. They would, they would need to have at least two of the three board members present to be able to meet legally.
Okay.
I'd say, sitting here last week, this is disappointing, but there was not action, um, because I, I think at the very least, if we're gonna go back to the old way, we need some lead time. Um, and so, you know, this is a little bit of, uh, ripping the rug out from under our feet. Um, the clerk's office, when boards and committees are going through there, uh, is requiring, you know, for future agendas that, that physical locations be put on agendas. Um, and so, you know, it's disappointing, I think, sitting here last week, the expectation was by tonight we would have this. Um, but, uh-
Well, speaking of expectations, then, uh, I'm assuming our IT support is well aware of what they're doing tomorrow. As we sit here tonight without an extension, Chris and his team know how they're gonna handle this week's worth of meetings in terms of being present, running it, you know.
The IT-
I know the times that they're hard and their, their, their dedication to their job is one thing, but in terms of expectations, we're in a good place with what's been set for our IT support? Given the disappointing news of the day today.
Um, if we have to, i- if, if nothing happens and we have to go back to the old model, um, you know, I think it's gonna be a lot on what boards and committees are looking for in terms of support. Um, but, you know, people are gonna have to start meeting in person and, and if they need further IT support, uh, they'll, they'll be able to coordinate that with us, but-
Okay.
And during that transition period, whereas the, uh, administrator said, it would have been nice if we had some lead up to the fact that they weren't gonna do legislative things, which again, it's not like that yet, they can still fix this. Um, then we would need to change the preamble that, uh, uh, Chair or whoever's starting the meeting would say, because they need to explain, you know, if this Zoom link is for your viewing only, it cannot be interactive and participatory. Because our preamble has been saying, in light of the state of emergency by the Commonwealth and the town's local emergency and the, you know, suspension of certain provisions of the open meeting law, this is allowed. But now we would need to change that preamble to explain, as a courtesy, we're letting you view, but you're not going to be able to participate unless you're physically available.
Okay. All right.
I'm sorry that, once again, you're getting disappointed this evening by things that are catching you off guard.
Will Trump pass, my wife's gonna cry.
Are we, uh, are we gonna deal with the local state of emergency this evening?
Yes, that's my third of three tonight.
Can't wait to make you a fire chief again, let's go.
I never stop with being a fire chief.
We're moving on from coronavirus community update, uh, to the CARES Act and our programmatic update.
Excellent. So, uh, just a reminder, I did file our, uh, January to March quarterly report with A and F on June fourth. I did not explicitly state that last week, uh, I do want you to know that I did get that out of time. Uh, in terms of the expenses that have been posted since last week, there were four expenses posted, which involved the hiring and training, cleaning and disinfecting, and accelerated total work capacity. So you've got two different ways to look at the data. One is the, just the, uh, the raw numbers, then of course, the next one is the pie chart. Some people like visual, um, presentation. Uh, and I do have two requests for you this evening. Uh, they are coming from the senior center. And this is pursuant to vote of the Council on Aging on June the ninth. Uh, they are requesting, uh, up to thirty-five-hundred dollars for packaging for meal delivery and up to forty-five-hundred dollars to cover driver hours for meal delivery. Uh, and this would be for the period of, uh, July first to December thirty-first.
Questions before we go for vote on that, John or Ben? I have one quick one, they're now fully open, but I'm assuming that they're not back to the meals, the regular meals that they provided in the event.
Sure, the explanation that was provided to me was that for the summer months, they are continuing with the meal delivery model only. In the fall, they plan to utilize a hybrid model with some meal delivery and some in-house meals.
Okay, all right. So I'll entertain a motion for approval of the Council on Aging request for thirty-five-hundred dollars for packaging and forty-five-hundred dollars for- for thirty-five hundred dollars for packaging and forty-five hundred dollars for driver hours.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So last Thursday I had the opportunity to attend a webinar that was focused primarily on CARES, but also it did address a little bit of, uh, ARPA. And I will cover the two different components individually. So I know I told you before that the CARES guidance has changed at least sixteen times. Uh, we, we can now add to this a seventeenth time for several months since, when again, the federal government made a last-minute change of, um, the end of December and said, no, we're going to give you another year. You can do things through the end of, uh, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Um, now, we need to conclude our CARES spend mission by October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. So we just lost two months of potential spending, uh, because what's going to happen is if the community has not spent, uh, spent all of its CARES money by, uh, October twenty-ninth, the remaining balance is going to be, uh, returned to the state and will be used for purposes consistent with the CARES Act as set by Treasury, uh, within the Commonwealth prior to the December thirty-first deadline. Because their concern was that if you waited to find out until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, that there was still money left, they would not legally be able to spend it. So they have now said, everybody needs to spend it by the end of October. We will quickly find out what, if any, balance you have left. We will recapture that. And we at the state level will use it for purposes as designed, uh, by Treasury. So, um, things like what we just voted a few moments ago, the request from, uh, Council on Aging, all of those expenses need to be done by, uh, October thirty-first. But just like last week when we talked about Zoom and, uh, the expense versus when the program goes past a certain date. So those packaging supplies that we purchased, we can still be using those in November, December. We just have to have bought them by the end of October. Unfortunately, the hours that they're looking for, those can only be paid through the twenty-ninth of October. So, um, again, most departments built in some of these ongoing expenses related to dealing with the effects of the pandemic into their FY twenty-two budget. Um, but I just do want to put you on notice that we've been tracking now for six months, thinking we had until the end of, uh, the calendar year. We now have until, uh, just after our, uh, town meeting.
I think that will be good context. Uh, I believe the school committee this week, um, intends to have CARES requests potentially on their agenda. So I think in that context, uh, when they come back in front of, uh, the select board, they'll want to remember that this deadline is, is different than what we had previously set.
Yes. So again, just got this on Thursday. I'd like to bring it to you right away.
Um, could you put that screen back up, Chris? Chief, I don't read that in such a literal way as you do. I see the word should, um, in two different instances, which would imply they're trying to coach municipalities to wrap it up. But if municipalities have needs for CARES funding beyond October the twenty-ninth, it's not prohibited.
The goggles from DLS and A and F, uh, who were on the, the webinar on Thursday, made it pretty clear that there would have to be an extremely compelling overarching explanation as to why it is, I mean, as Melody needed to spend CARES after October twenty-ninth. And, and they would need to give notice to, uh, the division prior and get approval for that to happen.
Um, this guidance goes on to suggest that A and F is going to provide additional guidance on concluding or closing the grant. Um, for a long time, we've been talking, and you've dropped the, uh, the FEMA eligibility cost off of the screen that we see every week, but it's still there.
Yes.
Um, are we reconciled? Do we know what's going to FEMA and do we know what's going to CARES?
So FEMA continues to change their guidance. Again, the new administration, uh, impacted what was and wasn't eligible and at what percentage. We are still tracking that. So, so I do have a, a handle on, on what I anticipate. And I'm very conservative in my estimates. I'm not, uh, lumping everything as being FEMA eligible. Uh, there may be some things that we submit that I get surprised and they also reimburse us, but those would be very minimal.
And the FEMA guy, uh, deadline goes beyond this date, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Most of the time, yeah.
Okay, Ben?
Uh, no.
Can you back up two slides to the one that has the general categories, not the pie chart, but the one before that? So this October twenty-ninth deadline impacts and things like, where is it? Um, Board of Health staffing needs?
Yes.
And not payroll, but hiring and training?
Yes.
Okay. And is one more payroll expenses? No. So it's going to impact some of these categories in that we're not going to be able to, um-
I ran through expenses to CARES.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a goal to get to zero?
Yes.
That gets zero dollars left.
Yes.
So with this new news, you and Travis are actively planning?
I anticipate that between FY twenty-one reconciliation with the financial staff, uh, and then as, like, again, these conversations will be happening sort of in parallel with the ARPA steering group.
Okay.
So that, again, we can figure out what's the best use of, should something be put into CARES? Should something be, you know, you know, targeted for ARPA? Um, but yes, our goal is that we will not have to turn any federal funds back into the Commonwealth in early November.
This board should accept to see sort of an accelerated rate of request?
Uh, for, uh, a large request from one or more departments that are trying to cap off this year twenty-one in a healthy manner, yes.
Okay. Fair enough. Okay. Thank you. Any other, Rob, text?
And I expect we'll probably just, sorry, I had to interrupt both, but, you know, it will be a topic of, uh, discussion obviously on Wednesday at our department head meeting. Just to remind folks that, you know, there is a way that you can make requests. If you report to an independent board committee, they need to get it, but it could, it's something that's under, uh, the jurisdiction of your board to bring it and we can screen it and bring it to you as most quickly as possible.
Okay. Well, I, I think we all appreciate the fact that you are paying such close attention because that is a, I like how you circled it and labeled it as new and I'm glad that you were there on the call to capture that and bring it. To be touched on the town administrator and the board.
Yes, too. It caught me quite often.
I'm sure it did. So we'll, um, let you put that behind you and move on to the ARPA update.
Excellent. So, uh, as you know, uh, the town administrator designed the, uh, ARPA steering group and he's waiting for one last, uh, elected committee to reorganize before we can gather the principles so that we can start having our, uh, high-level discussions. Um, but one of the other things that came up on the, uh, call last week, although it was focused primarily on CARES, they did sort of delve into the whole, uh, ARPA discussion. Um, and as we've discussed before, there are certain communities in the Commonwealth that will get their funds directly from the Treasury. The others are referred to as non-entitlement units. We are a non-entitlement unit. Therefore, we will be requesting our, uh, ARPA funds from the Commonwealth. Uh, and I had said last week that I expected I would probably be coming to you looking for a vote to authorize the Chair or to, uh, sign paperwork for us to apply for this. Um, we had discussed months ago, back in March, when, uh, the ARPA was first voted by the Congress, that there was this provision in the enabling language, uh, enabling legislation which talked about it needed to be, the funds need to be distributed in thirty days. And we weren't sure where that thirty-day was sixty. Uh, so it, it, there was also one for reference to thirty, which was really weird. So, and I found out from this call last week that part of that was because not every state wants to share the money with the local municipalities like Massachusetts does. We're in a really great position because they want to put the money out to the local communities. Other states want to hold it and that's why they put this language in the federal legislation to force the states to get it out to the NEUs. So once the, the clock started ticking on May twenty-seventh, uh, where A and F is now required to distribute its, uh, the funding that it is, um, overseeing to the NEUs, which is why we sort of have this, uh, we need to hurry up and apply because thirty days after May twenty-seventh, if we haven't applied for, um, our first allotment of, under ARPA, um, then A and F will be reaching out to the community to say, we've got this money, uh, it would really be great if you applied for it.
You don't want that, though.
No, no. And, and, and this is the thing that blew my mind. After ninety days and multiple attempts, which is why they say over there on the, on the right column, all reasonable efforts to contact NEUs, after ninety days, money that hasn't been taken by a community is up for reallocation to the communities that did ask for it. So right now, we already know what our number is based on a three-hundred-and-eighty-two-dollar allocation per capita. Um, I think it's possible that we might see more if, for whatever reason, some community says, I just don't want to deal with, I don't want to deal with asshole. I don't want to deal with all the reporting requirements. You guys can keep your money. Um, so there's a possibility that our balance by the time we get to round two could increase. Um, so that's why I have provided for you this evening, um, two, uh, documents that if you're ready to sign them, we can do them this week or if you want to do them next week. Definitely want to get them in the state before the twenty-seventh. Um, there would be, uh, I would be looking for a vote, uh, authorizing the Chair to sign the terms and conditions and the Title VI assurances documents, which are two of the attachments which need to be submitted as part of the application. And this application is so streamlined, it makes CARES look, look so complicated. There are two checkboxes. It's either, yes, we'd like to apply for our, our money, or no, we decline, we pass. It, it doesn't ask you for a budget. It just says, yeah, we'll take the money.
Okay. So, um, you would like two votes. One is to accept, to approve the Chair to submit the terms and conditions?
Right. Uh, I, I would ask, and again, this can be this week or it can be next week, but, uh, if you're looking for a vote of the board to authorize the Chair to sign the terms and conditions and the Title VI assurances documents as part of the, um, and it's called the Coronavirus State Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Program. So ARPA is the source of funding, but at the state level, it's referred to as the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Program.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor and all staying?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that carries.
Secondly, I would be looking for a vote to authorize either me or the town administrator to actually fill out the application again. It's an online web form to ask for these two attachments and checking a couple of boxes, but it is the easiest application I've ever seen. I hope not.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's down to who we're authorizing, uh, you guys can-
Either or. Yeah, they can kind of-
Talk to them.
I'll make a, um, motion for the guy in the blue shirt if they will.
What do you think you're going when they decide?
I work, uh, at the pleasure of the board and I report directly to the town administrator on the basis. And if he delegates that, uh, responsibility to me, I will be happy to carry it out.
Thank you. Okay. So you had a third?
I do. This is a historic moment. After four-hundred-and-fifty-six days, we are, I don't know.
It's something I can't seem to say.
We, we are, we are to the point at the bottom of our emergency declaration of a local state of emergency that was acted on, on March sixteenth, two thousand twenty, where it says that this shall be in effect until it is, until the conditions no longer exist. So although I was not willing to get backed into a corner earlier when, uh, Mr. Corin asked me if we were done, if we were in the clear, um, I do feel that we are at a position, uh, we are at a time where it would be appropriate, especially since the state's rescinding theirs at midnight, um, for us to, uh, rescind the local state of emergency that was acted on March sixteenth, uh, two thousand twenty.
I will entertain four discussions for a minute and then I think we'll probably move quickly to John and Colin.
I, I have a couple. Um, I was looking at my signature and I vividly remember that night. Um, it was a time of, um, dark uncertainty. We didn't know anything. Um, everybody was talking about the comparison to the Spanish flu, uh, the scope of what was about to, um, to set the country, the world, if you knew, it was really unknown. Uh, but people had a bad feel about it. Um, today, I asked you a question earlier. Today, if, if a second, third, fourth, whatever wave you call it emerges, if, if citizens have to go back for booster shots, uh, if something changes with respect to the positivity rates in the fall, I think the apparatus for public health, um, and our infrastructure overall is prepared to handle it in a way. On March sixteen, twenty twenty, it was not. Uh, I don't, I wouldn't see a reason to go back into a state of emergency under those conditions. It's been more of a public health emergency that needs to be handled by public health professionals. Sadly, I think we've become experts in a short period of time on epidemic management and I would be very remiss. I know I've thanked you over the, uh, past couple of years, months for your help, chief, but emergency management is something that you don't know how much you need it till you need it. I know you're a student of this process. We've talked about after action on this. Um, you've done an exceptional job guiding the community. Our job is really just to listen, ask a few questions, but the day-to-day management, working with the, um, the various town officials in our community has been something you've shouldered. Um, and I want to thank you for that, for that time period. It's been a lot for you personally. And in some ways, um, I think I expect a loud exhalation from you this evening. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Uh, if I could respond to that, um, when the board voted this on March sixteenth, two thousand twenty, uh, I did understand the gravity of what I had asked the board. Um, and yes, we did not know or anticipate exactly what was ahead of us, but I had a very restless night's sleep that night because of, I knew the gravity of what we were dealing with. And, um, I appreciate and grateful for the, the trust of the board, uh, to allow me to provide input and guidance and direction and suggestions and recommended votes, um, and to, to allow me to help coordinate our community's response. Uh, I believe that we are in a good position because, uh, town government continued to operate. The schools, uh, were able to reopen. Businesses have been able to reopen. Our community has been impacted. I, I can't say that we weren't impacted, uh, but I believe that we're going to emerge stronger. Uh, I'd like to express my thanks for the support of the town administrator, the board. Could not have done this without the IT director and his staff, um, all of the department heads who went through the process of identifying what was an essential personnel, the boards and committees who have become proficient at working remotely, uh, the staff who have been, you know, very adaptive to remote work, uh, adjusted their hours by appointment only. Um, but we have really done some great work as a community. We've addressed food insecurity. We've addressed rent and mortgage relief. Um, we have spent more than three-quarters of a million of federal funds. We have a very ample supply of PPD. We've done a lot of cleaning and sanitizing. Um, and really I think that this has positioned us well for this next phase that we're entering, which is the recovery phase, which we've been planning for the entire time. And ARPA is just going to help us do a better job of that. Thank you. That was a great Oscar speech. Um, and you kept it before the, uh, the music started. Um, I'll, I'll, you know, echo, um, Mr. Sterling's comment and, you know, express my sincere gratitude. I saw you from one, one side of the table and out from this side of the table. It's, uh, remarkable the amount of work you put in to put through this. I personally really appreciate I know the community of this. I will be very glad to not have to see you every week in front of us giving a presentation. Uh, but I do have one question, um, perhaps a comment, sort of needed to, to say. Is there, um, a place for maybe kind of giving a recap of some kind and sort of saying like, what have we learned? What can we do differently? What can we do better to sort of take from this to, um, so, you know, next time when somebody has to get the dust binder off the shelf, whenever that happens, if it's phase four COVID or if it's COVID twenty-seven or whatever it is, you know, they have a little bit more understanding. Is there, would that be something we should do, that we should go back and sort of say like, this is what worked, this is what didn't, this is what we should do differently so we can do those kinds of things? And then the state tells us the broad idea. But at least we can have some perspective there. Do you think that would be a worthwhile exercise?
Absolutely. And it, and it is my intention to prepare, uh, as John referred to earlier, it's referred to as an after-action report. It's sort of known by two terms. It's either an after-action report or it's an AAR slash IP proposal order.
Improvement plan?
Yeah. Um, so I've been taking notes of some of those teachable moments and things that we want to make sure that, uh, if we had to do it over again, we'd do it a little bit differently along the way. And my expectation would be that within forty-five days, I can get you, uh, a draft AAR IP that you can review. And then, you know, if you have feedback and we want to finesse it because understanding that this will be a public- we want to, an asset comes understanding that this will be a public document, uh, before it, you know, finally, the, the final version. But, yeah, within forty-five days, I can very easily provide the board with an AAR. Yeah, that would be my comment. Okay. So, I, I also, as, you know, you knew earlier, as a student of emergency management, as one who teaches emergency management, I've prepared AARs prior, um, for other incidents. I think it's a very helpful tool and process for us to go through, uh, and it is important for us to be introspective, and to acknowledge, we probably could have done that a little differently, and if we had to again, we should, um, but, you know, you know, there were mistakes along the way, and, and we've always. Great. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, see, my thing is, I said, too, for sure, it felt like handing over the, the controls to the wheel, uh, didn't quite know what we were in for, and, uh, looking back, I mean, we, we, town employees were protected, treated well, given safe workspace, both at home and here, and I think that speaks volumes to the work that you, IP, and our facilities manager, primarily with the town administrator guiding, um, were able to do, and that's such a huge accomplishment. Um, our most vulnerable, although impacted, I think we could have planned for and anticipated far, far worse, so, um, I think that's impressive. Very proud of the community, and how they stepped up. I see rent and mortgage relief as, as the shining star of, of what we were able to do for the community, as a community. Um, I will make note, though, that at some point over the past fourteen months, it is now all a blur, but there was an anniversary in there for you. And I don't, if you remember, John, I don't think you were on the board yet then, and I don't think you were here yet, Travis, so we kind of brushed, we right past that.
One year.
That's right. So, um, there is a celebration at some point to be had for such a significant anniversary, so we'll have to circle back around.
So, it, it.
And none of it's on your list of things to do differently next?
No, absolutely not. No, yeah, two, about two weeks in, into the, uh, the state of emergency, we were, uh, marking my twenty years as chief of the fire department, uh, so we're now a year plus past that, so, uh.
Twenty-one thousand, too?
It's, it's, my, my, my career as chief is now, uh, an adult with certain privileges.
There you go. Okay. Uh, and I do want to ask our IT director, Chris, if you took the ten thousand mark for participants. I was, we were shooting for it last week.
I agree, so.
Okay, well.
We may not reach that.
We may not.
On what happens or doesn't happen, that's, that's on Beacon Hill tonight.
That's right. All right, well, uh, you are all set on your updates, because if you are, I'm just going to turn to the Zoom audience, I did not catch it on the coronavirus community update. So, are there any participants on the Zoom call who would like to ask some questions? Go ahead and raise your hand. Okay, we'll see none.
That I think procedurally, sorry to draw.
Oh, my goodness, of course. Excuse me.
People were entertaining conversation, but we had not yet, uh, had the motion, uh, that was made and voted on.
Did you have that written?
I do not, so I'll make a simple motion to end the local state of emergency as declared by the select board in March of twenty twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nothing to sign, huh?
I will sleep well tonight.
Good night, Chief.
At least they better have you doing the things you're doing. Thank you, thank you.
All right, moving on then to Warren.
Yeah, the Warren, this evening totaling one million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars, seventy cents.
The second?
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that carries, uh, public comments, from John.
Uh, here, a couple items, I might do. Oh, uh, I would like to, um, express my admiration, and, um, congratulations to my colleague, Tina, on being awarded the, um, on the status of, on behalf of the Massachusetts Commission, the status woman, the twenty-twenty-one Commonwealth Herald Award. Um, I believe you're going to be, uh, given that a little over a week from now, for your extraordinary dedication to, uh, public and community service. So, I would like to recognize you publicly this evening, and congratulate you on that, uh, very nice award.
Thank you.
It's a very nice award.
These are dropped off for the occasion.
Oh, my God. I saw that.
I won't, uh, I won't put them on the table.
Mike, could you open the door, the dancing bear is coming in.
That is so sweet.
Wow. The clouds were busy tonight.
Busy at the meeting?
They're, they're Beacon Hill.
For a room full of gentlemen, you nailed it.
Uh, he had some help. Stacy wrapped the, uh, part of that process.
Well, I'll tell you a, a ten-second funny story, so that was Wednesday, and then Thursday morning, I'm sitting there, not quite fully dressed, and I get a call from my boss at work, like, Peter, you're supposed to be in work today. So, I was humbled almost immediately, and, uh, walked, um, one foot in front of the other, just like everybody else. But thank you for the flowers, that was very generous of you. Um, moving on, before I say any more words, Ben, any public comments?
Uh, no, just to echo John's sentiment.
That's very sweet.
Congratulations. We're all the same.
Thank you very much. Um, I have no public comments, but I'll turn to the Zoom call, and see if anyone here, please raise your hand, and we'll recognize you. Uh, Sarah, go ahead, just your name and your address, please.
Thank you so much, Sarah Baroud, I'm at twenty-one Lowland Street. Um, just wanted to ask for an update about the signage, about the truck exclusion on Woodland Street.
Okay, so let's turn to the town administrator, and let Travis, uh, take that one.
Sure, under my TA update, so I'll do it now. Um, we're going to have the police chief with us next Monday night, June twenty-first. Um, we'll try to put him at the top of the agenda for his convenience, and I know there's interested parties as well, um, just sort of very high level, um, the traffic enforcement arm of HPD has begun to do the public outreach we talked about, going to the businesses to let them know it's coming, the new sign boards that were procured, um, following attack requests at a previous town meeting are being utilized, um, and then we also have the ability to look at some neighboring communities who have recently gone through the heavy commercial vehicle exclusion process, um, and we had some signage questions that we were going back and forth with DOT to make sure we get, um, what will ultimately be the best for enforcement in the long run, um, should the HPD end up in court for any reason, um, to make sure that the signs are, are in best place. So, DPW and, and police were working on that. So, again, next week, Monday night, uh, on June twenty-first, we'll have the police chief in, um, to go through again, you know, the initial stages, he had sort of let you know what the enforcement, the education leading into the enforcement arm would look like. Um, the, the, uh, direct outreach, uh, to businesses in the area has already begun, um, and the last step will really be the signs that go up on the posts. Um, as, you know, we've shown on the screen previously, there's a few iterations of MUTCD approved signage, um, we see what some communities in our area have done, um, not necessarily the choice that we're going to make as a community for, um, enforcement reasons, uh, and so, um, I, I hope that he'll be able to answer all those questions, but I hope that, for now, um, that's a, a helpful update at the moment.
And Sarah, I, I want to just say, because, uh, you're asking because of the change with the Woodland Street exclusion, I want to say that, you know, personally, as the chair of the board, and I, I think I can speak for Ben and John, there's a deep commitment to seeing this successful, to seeing this through. Um, not only has the board and our town administrator put in significant amount of time to, to get us to this point, we're committed to it, um, there's also taxpayer dollars here, and, and that's a very serious, uh, very important, significant point here. Taxpayer money has been used to get us to this point, so we, we will see this through to be successful, and I'll add to that, a town meeting vote as well, in terms of the articles that, that appropriate the funds for this. So, um, this board remains, has been and remains committed to seeing success with these, these efforts. We appreciate your patience, uh, we are happy to provide updates and make sure that concerns are addressed, um, but we will see this through, and we will see it through successfully.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? Sarah?
No, thank you.
Okay, any other callers? Okay, so we will move on to public comments to the, uh, updates from the town administrator.
Okay, as I said, so, um, June twenty-first, uh, police chief will be with us. Uh, I don't know if the DPW director will be with us, if, if the police chief feels that's necessary, but obviously, um, you know, the DPW is ready to, to, um, is, is just making sure that the enforcement arm is, is comfortable, uh, and they, they've been fully on board, uh, and will be ready to, to do anything as, as that comes up. Um, so again, police chief will be with us next Monday, uh, to discuss the heavy commercial vehicle exclusion rollout, uh, implementation, education, and eventual enforcement of the heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on Woodland Street. Um, I don't have any further updates on the other applications, um, and what was asked of me was to reach out to MassDOT, uh, I believe that was a couple weeks ago, uh, for an update, and essentially, you know, it was acknowledged that, uh, I asked for an update, but I don't have one at the moment from MassDOT on those. Um, the other thing that I'd like to go into, it, it leads into a few points, I just want to, uh, use this opportunity, um, we've had quite a few conversations, um, about capital, um, through the budget process. One of the things that, that we discussed was sort of putting things into perspective of a five-year capital plan, um, you know, the nuts and bolts of that has been discussed, nothing's really changed, it's been discussed with this group through the budget process, the capital subcommittee, um, of which Ben, uh, and I have participated along with James Keith, the, uh, facilities manager, uh, the business manager of the schools, has become more involved through, through the last year. Um, and so, five-year, an initial five-year capital plan, which is taking what was originally provided to the town from the Collins Center, um, and, and sort of implementing that into a five-year, a standard five-year capital plan you see in a community like Holliston, um, is ready to be posted, um, there's just really some formatting issues more than anything at this point, before it goes online, um, and I just want to hit some of the highlights, uh, if anybody doesn't remember, this is a picture that was taken, um, from an individual who asked permission from the, the fire and police chief to fly a drone in our area, and gave us the license, uh, photographs, that's the cover of the document. Um, just a couple things I wanted to highlight for our discussion, I won't go through the whole document, obviously, uh, I'm using this more as a way to update on a couple items. Um, and so, it is for the, the five-year capital plan from FY twenty-two to twenty-six, um, and then, you know, the nuts and bolts of it, as I said, we sort of discussed, and I, I won't scroll in because it's, it's not really the importance here. The things that are in blue is what I'm trying to highlight. All of these, uh, are numbers that are essentially placeholders in our five-year capital plan, all of which are going to be dependent on studies for, uh, design engineering processes that we're currently going through. So, there's actually eight things highlighted in blue throughout this document, um, and so what I did here at the end, which is really what I want to use to, to update the board on a few things, is to highlight those eight, um, processes where we're sort of in the information gathering stages. So, the first one, let me actually zoom in here a little bit, so we can look at it. Um, the Blair Square Design and Engineering, uh, this was authorized in May, the RFP is actually due June twenty-fourth, so that's out on the street, we've got quite a bit of response to it. Uh, Nine Green Street is one that, um, I'd like to sort of have a, a little bit further discussion on here, um, as it relates to the items that the board will be taking up over the summer, um, as, uh, you know, what, what we did, uh, through the December, actually, special town meeting was engage, um, was, uh, get approval for, uh, funding for a demolition, stormwater, and site plan development that resulted in PARC ORP being engaged to the procurement process. They've already delivered essentially a demolition plan, which was then approved at the May town meeting, but it is really the next stage that I think it's time for the select board to engage the community on, and make sure people are sort of understanding all the, the information that PAR has been gathering for us, um, and get some community input on before, you know, an eventual October town meeting to move forward with the Nine Green Street process. Um, I think, you know, at this point, it would be good to have the select board meet, um, have public input, you know, I would, I would structure it as a, as a public hearing, really, there's no public hearing, um, requirement, we would be doing it really more as a best practice, to make sure that we're, we're reaching, um, everybody in town, have a conversation at some point, and then be in front of the, have this item in front of the planning board in August. Uh, I spoke with the town planner earlier on, on that, and everything, you know, looking at their plan as well through the summer. So, Nine Green Street, you know, is one that, the plan is sort of in the process, the first stage, which was a three-stage process, uh, with the PARC ORP, with the demolition, that plan is then, um, provided, and, and, uh, town meeting took that up in May, the next thing is going to be a stormwater and site plan. The other study that was just approved in May, that RFP is due at the end of this, uh, at the end of June, uh, June twenty-fifth, that RFP was put out by the facilities manager, um, and that is for the feasibility study for a Department of Public Works facility. Um, again, you know, when it comes to planning out the next five years, it's difficult to put on a, a five-year spending, and, you know, most likely a borrowing, uh, until the feasibility comes in with the information that we need to know, sort of discover what that project will look like. So, again, you know, what, what this is adding to the five-year CIP, and as an update to you, to the, uh, coming to the town administrator, is really where we are in these dam inspection and planning, I won't hit right now, but this is another one that will potentially lead to, to further capital items on the five-year CIP. We brought Matt Zetic and Ryan Clapp in to you for an update previously, once the Lennard, um, LLC gets back, um, and we are fully in compliance, the next stage will be planning of, of what the board would like to see, um, so I would anticipate, again, coming back to you through the summer on that. Stormwater engineering study, actually, as I walked out the door, um, a couple weeks ago, uh, DP, um, employees of the DPW were standing there with, uh, comprehensive environmental corporation, looking at, um, uh, looking at the technologies they could be using for doing a number of the things related to, um, looking at the, um, the, um, current needs of our coverts in town, um, and so they will be looking for potential covert rehabilitation projects that will be added to the capital LA, excuse me, the capital, the five-year capital plan, um, because the work that we've done on coverts over the years has been through the capital LA of the highway, uh, annual budget. Uh, the sidewalk connectivity study, as, um, Mr. Sparrow updated the board last week, um, they are getting ready to eventually present that to you as a board, um, and that should be coming up, uh, I believe we said, in early July.
I think, um, mid-July, they'll probably give us a product, and then we can probably meet with them, to be honest.
Okay. Um, and so that one, again, will obviously impact the five-year CIP when we get that information, so that's why it's highlighted in blue. Again, last week, uh, the school committee, and then the select board approved the, um, uh, statement of interest to go to the MSBA for the high school, um, project. Again, if, if that were to be selected by the MSBA, that would absolutely impact our five-year CIP, so it's highlighted above and referenced here. Um, that would follow, again, just like we're doing with the DPW, it would follow a feasibility study, design engineering, and then construction, that is also the process that the MSBA follows, with a lot of community input throughout that process. And lastly, the water modernization study, which came up in public comment last week, is again, um, uh, STANTEC was engaged for that study, um, and I would assume that, uh, they will be prepared as well in the coming weeks, um, to present the findings on that, and that will significantly impact the five-year capital plan for, uh, the water division of, uh, DPW. Um, so with that, again, this document, it's really, at, at this point, the nuts and bolts have been finalized for quite a while, but, uh, it's, it's a formatting before it can get up online, and then we'll push this out to everybody, um, but I wanted to use that to sort of highlight some of the things that we'll need to, to discuss over the summer as it relates to a lot of these ongoing issues. Um, so, with that, I would say Nine Green Street, if I could get a sense from the board when you would like me to schedule something for you to have a, again, if I do a public hearing to, to maximize the public input, I would need a, you know, a multiple week, uh, lead time to get it in the paper and those sort of things, do the butters list, um, dams will be coming to you over the summer, and then the water rates is another thing that you had requested to be on your radar over the summer, which would, you know, fold into, in some way, most likely, the water modernization being presented to you. Um, I think we could probably put those two together. Um, so, anyway, I, I apologize, that was a long-winded update, but essentially, Nine Green would be the one, if I could get some, um, uh, guidance from the board on when you think that would be a good, uh, night to, or, or what would be a good time period to have that scheduled? July.
We are waiting for a document from PAR, we're waiting for a one-pager. There was a meeting with them recently, like, maybe a month ago, where they said they would provide a one-pager, um, that could be used at a forum like that, to really sort of define legitimate, reasonable, future reuse. Um, and it would be good to have that engineering statement for a one-pager to present at that point in time, so it's, I wouldn't want that to hold up anything, I mean, July sometime, but.
So, I, I think they could get that.
Yeah, because we're going to get questions, one would expect, as to why, why this, not that, and to have an engineering, um, expert opinion weigh in on that would be helpful.
Absolutely, okay. So, as soon as possible in July, is that generally just?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Absolutely. Um, again, I, I, if, if you're comfortable, I know that the board had been interested in having a summer conversation on water rates, does it make sense to tie that to when STANTEC is ready to present the water modernization study?
Sure.
Okay. Um, and then dams, again, when Lennard is done, we'll bring back Matt Zetic and Ryan Clapp. Were there any questions or anything on those eight sort of things, you're all aware of these events?
Um, what was last time, the content of the capital plan was refreshed?
What was the last time the content of the capital plan was refreshed, and how did that happen?
So, I took over, actually, I think it was Ben on the Finance Committee at that point, had kept the Collins Center as up to date as possible, handed that over when I came on board. I went through all of the department heads to make sure that I got all of the most recent requests in the next five years, updated everything, you know, sort of rolled forward the Collins Center report, added new requests, you know, and brought that essentially through the Capital Subcommittee process, including Ben. And now, the Chair of that group is Ben Murphy, and had multiple conversations. But, so essentially, started with the department head level to make sure that everything that was rolled forward made sense, updated it accordingly. And really, it's those eight stages where we're waiting on more information that are the only things that really, in a five-year outlook, can't really be finalized until we have more information.
I guess my, my follow-up question is, like any budget, there needs to be an outreach process where you're seeking input. When do you think is the most appropriate time to extend that formal capital planning exercise?
So, it's interesting, generally speaking, in all my past municipal experience, that would be through the normal budget process. We would have budget documents that go off. For operating budget, we would have capital as well. Right, exactly. I think in this instance, because of the dedicated October Town Meeting, we have the ability to essentially say that we'll update our five-year CIP, you know, essentially, once through the normal operating budget process, and we'll update it mid-year. I, I don't think that that's problematic, but what we do and what you do see in this capital document is, you know, for a fiscal year like FY twenty-two, we're planning capital to be appropriated in May and October related to the, the use of free cash.
The reason I'm poking at this is, it's my colleagues, there, there is a, a straight nexus of this project to ARPA. In fact, when that committee meets, the sole document I think all of us are gonna be looking at is this. Right, this is, this is where you'll find all of the shovel-ready-ish projects, or funded projects in other cases, ready to go that we can potentially look at to start some ARPA spending against, right? But that data or that, those requests haven't really been vetted through recently, right, the process involving the other town departments. So, I guess I'm wondering out loud, Travis, how do you flush that data in such a way that helps prioritization be square, add any things that we don't know about, and then utilize it for the ARPA process at the same time? More precisely stated, wouldn't it be nice to start a capital planning process July one and have it wrapped up by August first? Then you have a finalized capital plan for the October Town Meeting that is pretty live and fresh for the steering group to chew on for ARPA work? Just throwing that out there, sort of spitballing an idea of use.
Yeah, no, I think, so there's a couple of things. One, you know, having a five-year CIP document for this town is a box that needs to be checked from a financial management standpoint, from, if I'm S and P. And so, getting the document sort of based on the information that we have right now up online is important. At the same point, this is an initial publishing of a document, and therefore, I'm perfectly comfortable visiting based on ARPA between now and October. You know, when you look at twenty-two and the FY twenty-two through twenty-six CIP, we've already appropriated capital for FY twenty-two at our May Town Meeting, right? So, it is, the ball has already begun rolling on this particular five-year CIP. That doesn't mean, like I said, that it can't be updated and that ARPA is not a very valid reason to do that.
Question of timing. What are you thinking?
I'm thinking that you're correct, that this document has, produces probably the most shovel-ready capital items for the ARPA steering group to look at. At the same point, when I went through the outreach process to department heads to look at capital needs, just as sort of the Collins Center would have done in two thousand nineteen, I wanna say eighteen maybe, was it seventeen? Okay, so they, yeah, they, they provided a report, I think in eighteen, they came in in seventeen, that that was a different conversation, right? I mean, ARPA changes the conversation, especially in relation to the outreach. And I think one of the things that we, you know, I don't know that we discussed earlier tonight, but we did last week, was when the ARPA steering group comes together, the first thing is gonna be, what's the outreach to all groups in town? Say, here are the guidelines of ARPA. Those guidelines are probably not gonna override the guidelines when I, when I have outreach for a five-year CIP when ARPA's not in the picture, right? So, I, I think you're, I, I think we're saying the same thing in that, you know...
Yeah, I'm throwing it out there through HIPAA. I, I think it's something that from a planning perspective, the timing now. I'll leave it to you and the committee to figure that out. One thing I, I do wanna, it just occurred to me, maybe we can defer to Chief Cassidy on this one, but as, as we took a vote this evening to make application, when available, for the ARPA money, I think folks should, and this has been mentioned before, but now that we're talking about capital, that money does not include a separate pot of money that the schools would be eligible for under ARPA. Is that correct? Do you happen to know, is that a formula, like CARES was, based on student count, or was it something different?
There is a S or third round that schools are eligible for under ARPA, but that's dependent on what you just authorized.
Do you happen to know if that's instructional funding only, or is it a general uses, anything else in ARPA?
It has some flexibility in uses.
So, for example, if the schools are in year one or year two of this plan, and it included, I don't know, artificial turf for a high school, would we be asking them to use their money or our money? It's an open question. You see where I'm going? So, as we consider the plan and its application, there are some options here. I think we have our, have to have our eyes open on it. But glad to see it as a statement. It's a great thing.
Eddie Thompson?
Yeah, this looks great. A lot better than what I was trying to do. We have the time and energy and...
Not that much capacity.
And experience doing this stuff. So, a couple of questions. Where are we gonna put it on the website when it goes up? Is it just gonna be like in the flash page or the front page, where there's a CIP here, or where is it gonna go?
We have a Financial Policies and Documents.
Where are we gonna put it?
Financial Policies and Infos.
Yep. Okay. So, if you go to Town Links, Financial Policies and Infos, where I would anticipate seeing it. So, for example, when we talk to S and P, we say, you know, the information that we generally provide is our annual audit, or legally obligated to do, which shows our clean financials, our OPEB reporting, our last standard of course rating, our policies and those types of things. This would be another financial document that will go up on the, on the...
And the schools, have they given me the five-year plan?
So, what I took to, and I work with Keith today on this, is the, with all of the information that they provided to the Collins Center that has been rolled forward, just to make sure that the information was fresh. What we have in here, again, is sort of maintaining that the vote that had been taken was for the May Town Meeting. They've not taken any action on October yet. So, everything sort of references and asterisks, asterisks, that those votes are still to be taken. I believe they did reference, in this budget cycle, that they plan on doing a full refresh of their five-year needs for the FY twenty-three through twenty-seven. And again, a five-year CIP document for the town would at all times roll forward by one year, right? That's how you track anything that may have slipped from your planning, anything that had sort of forced its ugly head from the end of your five-year outlook to the, to the front. And so, you know, that is, it is a rolling five-year CIP. And so, certainly, I will work with them to make sure that, you know, any information... But they, they have been able to review this and were comfortable with the way it was printed.
Okay, great. No, I think this is fantastic, and it's, it's great to see it moving forward. Thank you very much for doing it.
A couple of questions, comments. So, of all the eight projects you have listed, of all the eight items you have listed, those are all project-based, known projects that we've talked about in some...
So, in the five-year CIP, in the five-year look, right, where I have a number of, I have all of the costs projected out, I highlighted eight items to say that we are currently actively engaged in gaining more information that will clearly impact the financial, the future costs here. And so, those were the eight highlights, right?
Fair to say there's other information, other items on the CIP that, you know, we're not pulled out in those data. And what I'm getting at are things like sustainability, infrastructure, or projects, or whatever. Those are, right now, somewhat unknown and we're not actively involved, but that information's in there. It's over five years to be discussed, just not pulled out in those date projects. Okay. Of those date projects, some of them will make their way to the October Town Meeting, won't they?
Yes.
And the Finance Committee, as a group, has had a chance to review this before it goes up on the website?
No, so it is, right now, still in the formatting stage. The, the members of the Capital Subcommittee that voted it would be, the Chair of the Full Committee, Ken, the Chair of the Capital Subcommittee, Ben, and the outgoing Chair of the Capital Subcommittee, Tim Maxwell. Susan Essien also has been involved in the process previously. And so, there was, you know, significant involvement of Finance Committee members, but for the full Finance Committee, including their two new members, I'll make sure that they have sort of a full view before it goes up on the...
Will we expect a vote from them in any way on this, or an agenda item in any way on this?
The meeting on May eighteenth of the Capital Subcommittee was the last meeting I had before. I essentially said, I need to get this up online, and then, you know, other items have come up, but I would like to get it up online as soon as possible.
Understood, okay. I, I mean, for me, this makes it clear if not on this or that, or this or that set of decisions that the town faces, with those eight items that you pulled out to highlight. You're, you're clearly saying in this capital improvement plan that the town will make progress in all eight of those areas. And we're not choosing one over the other, and I think that's the key point, because there's, at times, there are conversations that make it out to be that we are choosing one over another, that it's gonna be this and not that. So, I like the way it's presented, because you've got all eight, you're holding all eight as priority projects. And I, I think the community would endorse that as well, so it looks good to me. And so, it'll be up on the website soon. Okay. Now, I have another comments question, so I think we can move on, unless you had anything else for the update, Travis?
No, I do have one item under Other Business.
Uh, one item for Travis, if this is under Other Business, take it there, Travis. But did you wanna update folks at home on CAP in their commencement work with the Town Hall?
Sure. So, the DLS, the Division of Local Services Technical Assistance Bureau has begun its engagement with the Town Hall, and they have started by sitting down with a number of elected officials, including the Select Board, Chair of the Finance Committee. I have sat down with them for quite a while. I mean, they, they're doing sort of intake meaning, meetings with a variety of people. Treasure Collector, the Town Accountant, the Assessors, including the Chair of the Board of Assessors. So, they've begun that stage. I think they actually may have completed all of the meetings that I just mentioned, which is quite a few and over an hour apiece, sometimes longer. And so, that's, that's the stage they're in. But normally, before COVID, it would look like commandeering this room to do all those meetings over a week or multiple weeks. You know, in today's day and age, it was done by Zoom. At this stage, they've asked for a lot of information. I appreciate the help of Sharon Emrick, Mary Bosquet, and Liz Greendale in the Clerk's Office. A significant amount of information related to bylaws, finances, everything has been provided to them at this point. I believe they have all the information they need. I think they're, they're sort of going into the crunching, and we'll hear back from them soon. I think start to finish, the timeline is probably three months. So, if they started their engagement in early June, we can extrapolate from there. And, yeah, so, DLS TAB, I would anticipate that being a significant conversation that we'll be having late summer when they're prepared to, to present to the town their findings. Again, last time that they made findings, just for an example of the kind of work that they do, they did, at that point, make a recommendation to the town in nineteen eighty-eight that the Treasure Collector should be appointed rather than elected. The town at the time had moved away from elected Treasure Collectors. Now, I think most people wouldn't have even thought of having an elected Treasure Collector. And so, at that point, and I don't wanna date Mary Bosquet, but that actually led to Mary Bosquet coming to the Town Hall, and in her current capacity as Treasure Collector. I believe she'd actually been here, but to her having that role. That's just an example. Obviously, they, they look at, what we ask them to do is look town-wide at, at all of the governance sort of issues. And there will be some overlap with items that the Governance Committee, I believe, at a recent meeting, had discussed on things that they wanted to look at over a multi-year process. And so, there might be some overlap, and there might be some ability for DLS TAB to sort of make recommendations to the Governance Committee and vice versa on, on some things that we may wanna to think about in terms of optimizing the way that we govern in Holliston. So, very excited to have them aboard, and they are in the information gathering stages. And again, appreciate all of the hard work from Mary, Sharon, and Liz on, on getting them that info.
Just for the record, Mary Bosquet would be elected Treasurer if she ran. There's that.
Okay.
Thanks, Travis.
Moving on, we're on number seven here, Select Board Liaison Assignments. Now, this is where the real fun starts.
You just offended the chief.
Oh. Look, if he wants to take... If you wanna take some...
All right. So, I, I think, just based on sort of bringing forward best practice, but also trying to make some sense of grouping some of these things, understanding that we have a new Chair, and the Chair position takes quite a bit of time. I've taken a crack at, at assigning some things based on interest and past experience. Again, obviously, any of these can be undone by your vote. I have a few that need to be filled in, including a lot in the Culture and Recreation section, but otherwise, I think we're, we're pretty well filled out. I think the ones, you know, just for reference, obviously, that take a significant amount of time, would be Public Safety, the Finance Committee, and the School Committee. The way that this is divvied up is to essentially give you each a very time-intensive grouping, which would be Tina, excuse me, the Chair for the School Committee, the Vice Chair for the Finance Committee, and the Clerk for Public Safety, Public Works. And so, I can start at the top, and we can fill in the rest here if you'd like.
Well, that's one way to do it, which, the other way maybe to start with, are there any assignments that you would like to reassign John or Ben, where your name is on the left-hand column there from last year, and you'd like to see it reassigned this year? Because if they say no, Travis, I'm gonna say let's plug them right in for FY twenty-two. And I'm hearing nothing, so let's go.
No, um, this is, this is the third time I've gone through this process, and this is the cleanest approach so far. The debt service piece, Travis, why wouldn't that, I know it's not a pension or a benefit, but... It, it, it kind of bundles with what the discipline that Ben's trying to pull together there, so I'd move that down to Ben.
I agree.
You okay keeping all those other ones under Sustainability, Technology, all that, Ben?
Yes.
Treasurer?
Yep.
Ben, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind taking Sustainability and handing off. Oh, I see, never mind, those bosoms probably been made there.
Trading.
Like playing cards.
So, Technology, Sustainability, and Town Clerk for Mr. Sparrow's. Those are, you know, some, some of the heavier items, if, you know, you wanna divvy them up. Or, I mean, Ben, at this point, obviously, the Finance Committee and your Tuesday nights are now committed.
Yes.
I wouldn't mind taking Sustainability.
Yeah, if you, if you wanna take it, I'm, I'm... Gonna give it up some.
No, I, I, actually, Travis already reassigned a bunch that I had, so... Oh, Building Inspector and Emergency Management. I would be those up and give Emergency Management probably to John. I would to do those up and give emergency management probably to John, since it goes in line with public works a little bit more. So just in terms of the difficult personalities involved.
I bet me.
Uh, and then, um, building inspector, is there one for facilities here? No.
You know what, I think-
Public buildings?
There's a public building, there's no facility.
Because we, well, with the budget, we-
I mean, I just repurposed it, uh, because it used to be a public building budget, which is why it went listed that way. And I just essentially set that as facilities, but I can change the name of it. And so I had that under, um, Mr. Cronin as well, as taking the, uh, public works and Town Hall Septage, I figured, uh, facilities would work well, uh, in that grouping. But again, you don't have to group it if you, if you choose not to.
I like that idea.
That's then under public safety, would leave me with Board of Health, which I'm fine with, um, and then reassigning building inspector and emergency management.
So emergency management goes to Mr. Cronin, Board of Health, and building inspector stay, um, this night? Okay, um, the sealer of weights and measures is, uh, is heavy hitting. Um, I think that takes us up the bottom page, anybody?
I'm doing thosey, so I, I don't know, Ben.
I, I'll take that heavy lift.
And you know what, I'll keep you some family services.
You're going to keep you some family services? Um, I gotta find that.
Keep you for that one, I'm not letting that go.
This is true. Um, okay, so the, the chunk we have up here, which is, um, a lot of culture and recreation, AgCom is one that, uh, has been on my radar a little bit more. They've had some re- restructuring, anybody interested in that, just be prepared for that. I think community farm as well, I, I would choose one liaison for both only because I think we're going to have some, you know, um, some interplay between those two groups in a good way in the coming year. Uh, COA Golf Course Advisory, Library Office, uh, excuse me, Office of Open Space Committee, um, you know, again, if, if I think anybody is interested, but.
I don't mind doing AgCom and Community Farm. Second.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, council on aging does have, you know, significant, I would say, um. What's that?
I'll, I'll keep it.
Uh, golf course, anybody interested in? I think, you know, we have a couple of things on that, on the radar there, um.
I don't like keeping it, um, I'm going to take it, I'm not going to stand in the way.
No jokes, but, but I'm going to say that, because if you do not play golf and never have, you probably should not be on that committee, so that takes me out.
I've never played golf.
Oh.
That failed. I've gone, I've stayed quite flat, that's why I think that would be a golf issue. But I don't mind, I don't mind keeping it, I really, I've, I've worked with them before, so.
All right, library and open space, um, library gets a new leadership, a new chair, uh, Carla Alfred. I think, uh, I'm not sure how much that took up your time in, in F Y twenty-one.
Uh, you know, the pandemic had a funny way of shutting down most of the days off work.
True, it's true.
Um, so, uh, so I'm fine with that.
Okay, you're going to keep it?
Yes, I am, yes.
All right.
Yeah, I'm not looking to change anything else on my list.
Oh, okay, so you have library and open space, and then I believe I have technology, town clerk.
I, I don't mind keeping those, but, okay, I, I, I have to keep those.
And then, so we're saying cable television would stay, Mr. Cronin Conservation Commission would stay, Tina, okay.
Easy, pretty easy.
All right, so then at that point, I think you could vote this, uh, as, as shown on TV.
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, F Y twenty-two select board liaison list as shown on TV. I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Carrie, so, okay, moving on, thank you Travis for doing that and this right now.
Yeah, I'll ask that Peg, when she's watching this, uh, does not put that in the motion, uh.
Uh, all right, so we're going to move on to board business. Uh, first, we have Iris Corey for appointment to the Conservation Committee, um, Commission, excuse me. And so she is not able to attend tonight, she has some personal reasons to not be here, but she did submit a letter to the Conservation Chair, Chris, uh, Jack, and I believe he endorses her wholeheartedly. And Travis, you have interviewed her or aware of an interview happening with her?
Yeah, so they actually, they did their interview process, uh, Ryan Klapp has been reaching out, um, they have a process to sort of get applicants. We, we discussed the applicants that they had, um, I think, you know, they're very excited about. And this, uh, she was actually, um, interviewed on camera for, for the, the con con, so anybody could watch that. And again, she would be with us, but, uh, they are interested in having her as a member, um, because they are going to be having some quorum issues over the summer. At the same point, when it is better for her personally, I think, you know, we'll, we can arrange for her to come and meet the group at that point.
Okay, uh, I think she's going to be busy for a while, so I'm not sure we need to have her come and meet with us in person, but I, I'm prepared to entertain a motion to appoint Iris Corey to the Conservation Commission. And can you just state the term, Travis, is it a one or a two or a three year?
Oh, I'm sorry, I usually have that on the agenda.
I'm going to go with it's probably a three year.
I believe it is, and it would start July first, twenty twenty-one, so it would be through twenty twenty-four. Yes, it is a three-year appointment.
Okay, so entertain a motion to appoint Iris Corey to a three-year term, starting Ju- July first, twenty twenty-one, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Uh, make that motion and add that, um, Miss Corey has an exceptionally strong resume for this position. Very impressive, actually, so long as you have. Uh, yeah, I will second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And moving on then to, and thank you Iris for, uh, volunteering to serve your time, um, Conservation Mission Annual Appointment.
Serve your time.
Serve your time on behalf of, not serve time, serve huffle.
Uh.
Getting late now.
All right.
Yes, John, please, yes.
Uh, so with regard to the F Y twenty-two appointments, the board is electing to, um, move to approve, the listing of appointments is provided by the town administrator. This is a five-page listing of positions which will be posted on our website. Uh, if folks are inclined to view, there are a number of open seats. We always encourage folks who are interested in volunteering for town to, uh, make inquiry through the town clerk or the town administrator's offices, see the vacancies posted on this product. So as produced and provided by the town administrator, I'll make a motion to approve the appointments as listed for F Y twenty-two. I will second that motion.
Hey, um, may I make a comment before we, before we move on to the, all in favor? Um, I just want to acknowledge Linda Marshall's on the call, and, um, I want to thank Linda where she's here. I'll call her out specifically, uh, she will be our M W R T A, National Regional Transit Authority, um, designated for the Town Hall. And so, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If that carries, so moving on, we have meeting minutes for May seventeenth and May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. So unless there are comments specific to either, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion, or accept rather, a motion for both.
Ooh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If that carries, okay, we have a document to be signed, which is a regulatory agreement for one seventy-two Concord Street. This is the Habitat for Humanity Home, is the construction is finished, Travis? Or near, near completion?
Near completion.
Okay, John, you have a statement, I think, certification, certificate of vote to read.
Hi, John Cronin, clerk of the Select Board of Holliston, hereby certify that at a meeting of the Select Board of Town Holliston, at which quorum was present and acting throughout, the following resolution was duly adopted and is now in full force and effect. Voted to acquire and accept an easement for access over the property located at one seventy-two Concord Street owned by Holliston Housing Trust. Voted to authorize Christina Hein, chairwoman of the Select Board to Holliston, to execute any document deemed necessary to accept this transfer. I further certify that the authority hereby conferred is consistent with the bylaws of Town Holliston, that said vote is still in force and effect and has not been altered, amended, or rescinded. Executed as a sealed instrument on this fourteenth day of June, twenty twenty-one, by John Cronin, clerk, Select Board of Holliston.
Do you need a motion to, you don't need a motion, do you?
Yes, we are looking for a motion on that.
Okay, so, um, entertain a motion to accept the certificate of vote?
Uh, the motion will be to approve the regulatory agreement.
Entertain a motion to approve the regulatory agreement.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, if that carries.
So I, do I sign this now and Liz will, um, um, notarize it tomorrow?
Yeah, okay.
All right, moving on, we're going to, um, look at the F Y twenty-two meeting schedule from July through December. Uh, so I don't have anything, I don't have base in here, Travis.
Oh, I apologize, I think it's a, it's a physical copy, um, that is in the folder for the clerk. I apologize for not putting it in the, uh, what happens when I go on vacation. Um, I l- I lose track of these things. So I, I think really the only, um, significant date- The only significant date, um, that, that comes up is in September, where, um, a holiday on a Monday and a ho- and a, then a Jewish holiday that starts on a Tuesday night, um, will probably lead us to just canceling one select board meeting in the beginning of September. Um, otherwise, obviously, you know, we work around holidays on Monday, uh, by going to Tuesday. Um, and so the schedule is out there, okay, so there it is. Um, and actually, could you just remind me of which date has been removed? I think it's the first week in September, um.
No, the sixth, Tuesday the seventh.
Yeah, so there's back-to-back holidays, so at this stage, the plan would be to essentially skip that week. Um, and if, uh, you know, as we approach, uh, and at, um, the head of the chair, obviously, we could schedule a date off-cycle as needed.
Yeah.
Um, but we would go into the plan of not meeting.
Okay, and that, that Monday there, the sixth, is actually Labor Day, right?
It's a Labor Day and then there's a holiday starting on a Tuesday.
Okay, um, I will just point out before we consider any, um, vote to vote, do you want to vote to accept the meeting date? So that they, they then get posted, yeah.
Yes, please, we'll post August.
Um, so August ninth and then August twenty-third at this point, I would like to ask Ben if he would serve as chair, although it, it looks like there's some big items coming up in August, so in, potentially, I would come home for August ninth. But for sure, I'm going to need the vice chair to serve as chair on Monday, August twenty-third.
And I'm out July twenty-sixth. And I'm out. August, I want to say, thirty, thirty.
So the board will meet without the town administrator on August thirtieth? You guys okay with that? All right, so John, did you want to get the base to tell you there?
Uh, I gave it to you. So I'll make a motion to approve the posting of meetings of the Select Board on July sixth, July twelfth, July nineteenth, July twenty-sixth, August second, August ninth, August sixteenth, August twenty-third. Thirty, Travis, are we going to, um, delay that because of your lack of attendance, or?
I think you can, I think we'll post it and if you want to-
Good idea, why don't we have the assistant town administrator hold that meeting? I like that, I think. August thirtieth, September thirteenth, September twentieth, September twenty-seventh, October fourth, twelfth. We will meet on Monday, October eighteenth, prior to the fall town meeting, the high school. Back at regular scheduled meeting on October twenty-fifth, November first, eighth, fifteenth, twenty-second, twenty-ninth, Monday, December sixth, December thirteenth, December twentieth, and Monday, December twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one. That's my motion.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I just want you to, you know, if they didn't vote, you got out of the meeting. Going to hold it to that one.
That's, that's what I make a clerk.
Right. Uh, we have a request for the Lions Club Carnival, July seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth. They're looking for a common dictador's license and a waiver of fee. So I think we're going to vote all in one to consider approving the license and waiving the fee.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And last, we have the signs, uh, uh, we need to sign rather the approved entertainment license to the farmer's market. That does not require a vote, we voted last week for that, so.
Yes, just to clarify and so you're all comfortable with the discussion that we had, is that the entertainment license would be for the year, but it would not allow for music to begin before ten A M. And respective neighbors may have their windows open, uh, as it is on our.
All right, well, that ends board business, unless John has anything else to say, in which we can bring it up under other business.
I just wanted to remind folks that we have an upcoming hazardous, uh, Holliston hazardous, Holliston has a hall, yeah, um, Holliston is a household hazardous waste day. Saturday, July tenth, twenty twenty-one, eight A M. to twelve P M., or until capacity is reached. Uh, again, this announcement is at the Robert Adams Middle School on three twenty-three Woodland Street. Um, this is our annual event, and our website does contain the list of acceptable and unacceptable materials. That is all. I have no.
Um, my only comment is to remind folks that the farmer's market is this Sunday, which is off of Father's Day. So I believe I'm in the presence of a couple fathers here, so happy Father's Day to those who are. Uh, and see you at the farmer's market, so it starts at nine. Uh, Bobby Blair has organized a little bit of a grand opening, I think, starting at around eight thirty that morning. So it says to do, um, so come on down to farmer's market, bring your money, uh, bring your smiles. And it will really be the first community event, other than the Memorial Day Parade, in fourteen plus months. And it will be the first without a state of emergency in place, so I can hope to see you there, yes.
We just have one item, um.
Let me have that moment, if I can bring it on up.
Wow, I tried to wait, wow, oh my God.
I apologize.
Take your flowers and go home.
I apologize, um, okay, so, there's a request, uh, this is much less fun, I should have done this before, yeah. Ruined the moment. Um, there's a request from the sustainability coordinator based on the previous conversation about the Metro West Solar and Clean Heat Challenge to include a stuffer in the tax mailing, which will go out from the treasure collector. That needs to be approved by you. Um, a couple of things to make clear before you make your decision. One would be there is a cost associated putting it in the stuffer, um, and it is the opinion of the sustainability coordinator that the vendors would pay for that. Um, so if you are in favor of having a, a, an item go in the tax bills that is not related to the tax bill, which is why it is, it falls in your realm, um, then that's one thing, the cost will be covered by the vendors. Um, what I would look for is a vote from you, and I would make the motion, um, reliant on the fact that, uh, we will receive confirmation, um, from the vendors that they would, they would cover the cost.
This is the tax bill, not the water bill.
This is the tax bill because of the cycle that we're currently on and getting it out in the timeframe of, of the project.
And if the vendor does not pay for this, it does not go out?
Then I would say that we wouldn't commit to it, we would push it out in another way that is not the stuffer.
Okay, uh, so I will entertain a motion to allow for a-
Press advisory?
Press advisory to go out in the next round of property tax bills to update the community on an opportunity to-
The Metro West Solar and Clean Heat Challenge.
Take advantage of the Metro West Solar and Heat Challenge.
Ooh, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Wait and Travis, anything else?
Um, no, just, uh, I, I probably, I don't think I need a vote. So the town meeting approved the Septic Easement, um, for the church next door, uh, again, the Septic System is on the town property. Uh, we need the easement, um, to, to complete the project. The payment, uh, will be initiated, um, so I'm just letting you know, uh, that that, uh, agreement would, that it was in place has now been worked out through, uh, council and will be initiated, uh, and, uh, the bid process on that project, um, will be overseen by the facilities manager and started very soon, so, um, the last step there in the red tape of it all. Thank you. Really should have ended on the farmer's market, I-
I just made a motion to, Mr. Aaron.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much for attending tonight, and we will see you hopefully Sunday, and Sunday, next Monday night.